Okay, thank you. Good evening, welcome to the Committee of the Whole for Monday, August 28, 2023. We are in the council chambers, so we're live tonight. We'll call the meeting order at 6:01. Roll call, city clerk?
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor Norris, Counselor McCabe, Counselor Sheffield, and Counselor Piazza are present.
Okay, thank you. We'll start with legislative updates. If I could get Representative Bumgarner, Representative Connolly, if you guys can come up here, you'll be sharing a microphone, maybe you won't, and then when Senator Summers comes up, she will join you. I was gonna have all three come up to the table, and then we'll start out with Representative Bumgarner, and then we'll go. Okay? So Representative Bumgarner, you have the floor.
First and foremost, I want to thank you for the entire city council floor. There we go. Red, all right, green for go, so apologize for the technical difficulties. I want to thank you for inviting the delegation to speak to this past legislative session. I know we circled up earlier this year to discuss our legislative agendas before we actually, at least I took the oath of office, and very much appreciated those insights in our discussion and now our subsequent conversation regarding legislative session. I served on three committees this year. The Planning and Development Committee with Representative Connolly, the Environment Committee, which has cognizance over environmental issues and agriculture as well, and Finance Revenue and Bonding, which has cognizance over the revenue side of the budget, and also serve on both the Bonding Subcommittee and General Bonding Obligation Subcommittee and the Transportation Bonding Subcommittee. We had a very busy session, I would say a bipartisan session, especially when it pertained to the state budget, reducing state income taxes for our hardworking, middle-class families, of course, and also ensuring that we continue to have some of our fiscal guardrails in place to ensure that our state adheres to more fiscal responsibility for the years to come. So, you know, very much, you know, want to recognize those efforts, because, you know, not every year we see certainly both Republicans and Democrats coming together on state finances, so do want to acknowledge that and acknowledge that this entire delegation was supportive of the state budget. With respect to environmental issues, kind of like to focus on some of the committee work, with respect to how we manage our solid waste, obviously very important to the City of Groton, as the city is very unique in, as the only municipality that actually runs solid waste collection in the town of Groton. Obviously, you know, the city offering curbside municipal solid waste and recycling to about 10,000 residents here in the city. And so this year, we had probably the most comprehensive discussion about the future of solid waste management at the state level, in large part because of the closing of the Mira facility in Hartford that historically took in the overwhelming majority of the state's trash. Since it shuttered its doors, we're now landfilling a lot of this trash elsewhere. Southeastern Connecticut's in the unique position, obviously. We have our own, we utilize an incinerator here in eastern Connecticut to manage our solid waste. But in the future, where the state's going to be looking at diverting our food scraps and our recyclables to reduce the materials that we're sending to landfills and burning. There will be a profound economic impact, and so just wanted to alert the city of those changes and the opportunities for grants that are now made available as a result of these efforts. But again, now municipalities are able to designate disposal areas for residential food scraps and yard waste, food diversion in recycling facilities, and also now permits the establishment of an ordinance to identify new programs for solid waste and improving current services. And lastly, just to speak to the amount of grant funds available, 15 million for, to municipalities to renovate and expand and provide equipment for solid waste facilities, and also continue to fund our sustainable materials management program, which the town of Stonington has leveraged to offer municipal pilot program, on a pilot program basis, a municipal food scraps collection program that is now going to an anaerobic digester facility. Senator Summers and I have been active in the anaerobic digester movement, so to speak, you know, our times in the legislature, and, you know, would support any efforts to, you know, should the city explore those uses in the future. Lastly, and I'll pass it over to my colleagues, but just on the housing front, I think it was, you know, abundantly clear, you know, in the last couple of years here in Groton, that the issue of safe, affordable housing for a community is of paramount importance. And I know this is an issue near and dear to everyone at this table. We've all had very emotional conversations about this issue over the last few years as a result of the mold crisis at Branford Manor, and certainly want to acknowledge the collective work of this delegation for having very tough conversations about those issues in partnership with the city to move the needle forward for our residents at Branford Manor. I would note, as part of the comprehensive housing bill, that I supported this past legislative session. In terms of housing violation code forms, there is an issue, I know, in the past with many Spanish residents unable to communicate some of the issues they are having with respect to issues with Branford Manor, and vocalizing those issues on a housing violation complaint form. And now those forms at a statewide level will be required to be, it is required to provide those forms in Spanish as well, to ensure that every single resident does have access to, or a tool to communicate what their issues are with the people that are, to safeguard their safe health and wellness. So that was just an example of how I think we can all make a difference in a larger comprehensive piece of legislation. We can lend our own, you know, lend the experiences of our constituents to the conversation as we're formulating these great policy ideas, and really enjoyed working with Representative Connolly on Planning and Development to have these bold conversations about what the future of housing looks like in our region. So I'll pass it on to my, Representative, to my right?
Representative Connolly. Do we want to go one at a time, or do we want to hold our questions till everybody's done, and then go from there? What does council desire? Hold on, I know what you desire, because your hand's up, but my question is, do we want to let everybody speak, and then we ask questions, or do we want to go?
I think we should wait, because they're all on some of the same committees.
Right. So I'm gonna have you wait. You okay with that? Okay. Representative Connolly?
Thank you. Thank you for having us, and thank you for working with our summer schedules. I know this meeting was a couple weeks, at least in the works, with everyone. I sent a, I sit on, like Andre said, we both sit on Planning and Development together. I also sit on Transportation, which does, if it flies, drives, or uses the rails, if it's moving, we deal with it, or boats, too. And then I sit on Judiciary Committee, which does all of our civil and criminal laws, anything with a fine or anything with a penalty, and all of our major laws, including appointments of officials to various areas, including judges and commissioners. I also chair the House Screening Committee, so if it's a House bill, it has to go through me before it makes it to the House floor for final changes and approvals, and to make sure the bills are funded in the budget, so we don't pass any unfunded mandates. But prior to this meeting, I did send out two things, and I believe everyone had it. I know there were some questions on one of the bills. I did send out the Acts Affecting Town Clerks, which is a summary of all of our 2023 bills for town clerks and elections, and then I sent out Acts Affecting Municipalities, which are all of our bills that affect municipalities, such as yourself. Should give you a summary, this year we did have over 7,000 bills entered into the system, and about 130 passed. Some of them are, were just one paragraph bills, some of them were 1,000 pages. So this is a summary, and these are written by our nonpartisan staff, so that give you a summary between the legalese of the bills to the generic what bills do. So please take a look, if you have any questions, let us know, and there are other great bills. I wanted to go over a couple of things that affect the city. While I do a lot of work and did a lot of work on some bills that I think were great, not all of them affect the city. So one of the things I did want to talk briefly was voting, and there are two voting changes that may affect the city. First is the voting drop boxes, and that's in the elections item, that voting drop boxes can be 29 days ahead of an election or a primary, they can be open, so they change when drop boxes are opened, so to make sure folks know that, so you don't violate that law, because there is a penalty for that one. The second is that early voting, for some areas, it does affect municipal elections, if, not just municipal elections, sorry, it affects budgets, municipal budgets if votes are voting on the budget. Now, you guys have a freemans committee, which is different than a public vote, but I would strongly suggest that you talk to the Secretary of State's office, so that you know, do you need to do early voting for that or not. Early voting is effective next year for presidential primary, which may be moved up. We have special session at the end of September, and that is the goal, to move up our presidential primaries to March, which would make us important in the national primary race, instead of August, where we are not as important in the national primary race. So early voting will be able to start for the presidential primary, any election that starts in 2024. So your 2023 November elections, sorry, regular rules, no early voting for that. You can still your absentee ballot, just like anyone else, but in January, the new laws take effect. So for your January elections, any specials that you have after that, of course, the presidential, and then the 2024, and on. There are grants, again, since this, our budget is June to July, so the grants, since we're starting early voting in January 2024, that's only a few months, so that would be January 2024 through July, June 30th of 2024. It is six months, so it's not, the budget isn't there for the full year, it's only there for half of the year, because that's how our state budgeting works. But if you have questions on that, I definitely would look into your budget to make sure, you know, if you have to do an early voting or not. And as far as the municipal changes, one bill that I worked on was, which may affect your city clerk, was marriage, so you have to be 18 now to be married. No more 35-year-old people marrying 15-year-old people, we're not doing that anymore. Everyone has to be 18, no excuses, no exemptions, no court appointed, 18. So if we do marriage licenses, 18 plus, both people. We did, we also, a bill that actually was recommended by the Groton Town Clerk passed, which the city clerk may see as well, for if a baby passes away, there will be a new birth certificate, a new death certificate. The old death certificate actually said "death" across the whole thing and a watermark, which was really kind of sad, extra sad that it said, you know, fetal death and a watermark across it. So the death certificate for fetal birth will be done, the city clerk doesn't, a parent doesn't have to bring paperwork to the clerk anymore, it's going to be done by the state automatically, just like a death of someone who is not a baby or is stillborn. So that should help families a little bit more, and deal a little less work off the city clerk's plate, and those are really sad situations, when families used to have to wait in the city clerk line with the paperwork that their baby was stillborn and passed away. So that will help folks a lot. Diaper changes are required, diaper change stations are going to be required in all restrooms and all new buildings, new or renovated public buildings. So if it's open to the public, and it's new or newly renovated, if you have public buildings, like your renovations to the restrooms at Shenandoah Golf Course in the city, does need diaper changing.
Down property.
It is town property, but they will be asking for, it's located in the city, so you guys will be upholding the city rules for that. Online, building permits are gonna have to be online, you have some time to do that, but if you're not online yet for your building permits, please try to get the work for that.
We're already online.
Excellent. There are major changes to CEMERs, if you have, any of your unions are using the CEMERs pension, there are major changes where people may want to retire by June 30th to take advantage of some financialness.
Yeah, none of our employees are on CEMERs.
You had two changes in workers' compensation. The main one that affects you is the portal-to-portal for 911 or emergency dispatchers. They changed, in certain circumstances, folks can get portal-to-portal coverage, which means coverage from their home to their workplace. It's not for all circumstances, it's for certain circumstances, and that's Public Act 20380. Your current workers' comp coverage does cover you for that, too. It puts your EMS workers more in line with police and fire, and the protections that those officers have, as opposed to medical providers, which is what they were in line with before. So they don't have quite all the protections that police and fire do, but they have more protections than, let's say, a nurse or a doctor, because they really do more police and fire work than medical work. The Firefighters' Cancer Relief Fund, this is important if you have a firefighter who is diagnosed with cancer, because there's a limited amount of money, and once this money's gone, it's gone. So if you do have someone who's diagnosed with cancer, who has a cancer claim pending, do be aware that there is a fund that has money, had, I believe, 5 million put into it, which may only cover one or two officers' medical bills. So that is there, it would not go on your workers' comp coverage, it would go into this fund if you're able to use it. So hopefully, if you have someone that needs it, there's some money there now, if you have someone that's pending, please utilize it. The goal is to get more funding in future budgets, but right now, that's what's in the fund, and that's to, that will cover lost time, medical, and dependency benefits if someone has a spouse or child. Other thing...
I can email, I made copies of all this, what you guys saw.
I emailed it to everyone, too, thanks, Tom. Also, there was some municipal with our blight bill, a lot of the benefits, and one was, a lot of the major law changes affect larger areas, but some of the things that affect smaller areas is some of the fines that you guys can give onto people getting blight, or onto landlords that aren't participating or working with your departments, the fines increased, so you'll have a little more push to help folks participate. Some of the abandoned and rights to sue, you have to have a little bit more population than what you have, but commercial blight and civil blight for commercial buildings and residential property, there is an area where fines go up per violation, and they go up a little bit higher, which is beneficial to folks. The fine for littering also did increase, so hopefully, we all hope people do not litter, but the fine's higher, so sometimes people do need a little ticket to remind them to behave. Automatic traffic lights, this came out of the Transportation Committee, so you will have the opportunity, if you wish to have red light cameras, now there's a process for this, you can't just install them tomorrow, you have to file paperwork with the state and with DOT, you have to make sure that your cameras are in an area that's not negatively affecting anyone by color or by economic class. So you do have to do a study to do your red light cameras, and they have to be approved, and they have to be signed, so no surprising red light cameras, you gotta put the signs up that there's a red light camera ahead. The cameras are only for red light violations, they're not for other violations, not for speeding, or not having proper registration, it's only for the red light, if you're stopping, or not doing the full and complete stop. So you will have some opportunities for that. The goal of that bill is to make life a little safer, and to hope that municipalities put it on areas that are dangerous intersections, and not just areas to request more funding. Also, I want to point out that after page 10, we did list all the different grant opportunities, because that's something that you guys asked at our last meeting, is can you tell us more about grants? So there are, all the municipal grants are listed there, so you can learn about them and apply for them. If you do have a grant, please let us know, so we can support it and do letters of support. That is something that we all do on a regular basis, we generally do them jointly, and are happy to assist. Here for questions if needed.
Okay, Senator Summers?
Yes, but you all have the list now, like, in writing, which sometimes for me is easier than reading everything online, of all the major acts, and the different ones that are separated by the town, what affects the town clerks, and what affects the municipalities. Sorry, you can't hear me. So, you know, we each have different committees that we sit on. I sit as the ranking member on Public Health, I sit on Appropriations, I also sit on Commerce, and I sit on nominations that the governor puts, nominations and appointments. And I also sit on the Tourism Caucus, the Biotech Caucus, the Rural Caucus, the Sportsman Caucus, the Opiate Caucus, the IDD Caucus, and I also have a space on the Environmental Standards Committee, that I've been on now as one of the co-chairs for seven years, and that is the group that sets the environmental standards for our purchase power agreements for wind, and it is slowly and constantly changing. We just set new standards for the new purchase power agreement that may go out for the next procurement for wind, and I'm on the Governor's Council for Women and Girls. So my focus really has been slightly different, I do a lot of environmental work, but I found I'm more effective not being on that committee. Representative Bumgarner feels he's more effective on the committee. So some of the bills that we were able to pass this year that are in environment, that were important to me, were the anaerobic digestion, being able to actually push that, I've been talking about that for eight years, and we are finally seeing that move along, that will help people that are not only on farms, but municipalities can consider taking your organic food matter to an anaerobic digester. I would love to see one in eastern Connecticut that is fully operational. Right now, there's one in Southington, that is the size that we would need here in eastern Connecticut, but it makes all the other waste, if you're burning it in Preston, much more efficient, because you're taking all that wet, organic matter out of the food stream, and it also creates this wonderful compost and a gas that can be used to either power vehicles or greenhouses, et cetera, et cetera. So we're pushing that through, and it could help reduce your tipping fees as a municipality. We were able to pass legislation on mold, which will help set the standard for mold, that will empower our Ledge Light Health District, or Health Districts, to be able to cite landlords that do not provide adequate ventilation, et cetera, and they can do the proper type of testing. Public Health is going to come back to the committee with what the standards should be, the levels, and how to do the testing. There's a lot of confusion on how to do the testing, and unfortunately, in the Branford Manor situation, there were people doing testing that is not appropriate for how you test for mold, because mold is in the air outside, et cetera. So we really need to make sure the testing is done adequately, and Public Health will be coming back to the committee on how to do those tests, what the protocol is, and who should be qualified to be able to do those tests. So I think that's really important, because we don't want to scare people unnecessarily, and the experts will be able to set the standard. The actual, the federal government is actually now looking at Connecticut's legislation because of issues that we're having at one of our service academies, so that's sort of interesting that here we are, you know, sort of taking the forefront of what the standard should be for mold before the federal government is able to do so. So I'm glad that we were able to get that particular bill passed. It also included some, a task force on studying a certain type of pipe that I can't pronounce right now, that is known to be leaking, and when it leaks, it also causes molds, there's a task force that's gonna address that, and unfortunately, I think this type of piping is in many of the homes, especially in the northern part of the state of Connecticut. So that's something that the other chair of Public Health wanted to definitely look at. Some of the things that may kind of cross over for the municipalities, public health-wise, are, one of our big bills we did was a wellness bill, it was SB 9, there's a lot in it, if you're interested, you can go look at all the different things, but two of the things that I think are really important are, it provides funding for us to be able to purchase, bulk purchase Narcan through Demus, and municipalities will have an opportunity to get your product from Demus on a grant program, where they're gonna bulk purchase it and get the best rate, and you can apply to be able to purchase, or, it's actually not to purchase, it's a grant program, where you would be able to get the Narcan for your police officers through that, because we think that's really important. Also, there is money available for fentanyl strips, which are really important for your first responders, and there also is a pilot study for harm reduction centers, which we think are really important fighting the opiate crisis. They are centers that are designed where somebody who is an addict can come in, they can take a shower, they can get something to eat, they can get the support that they need, they could take a nap, they can do everything but inject drugs there, and it is something that, we have one in Hartford, but we're looking to set two others, I think, up, maybe three, depending on how the funding works, throughout the state, to just see what type of outcomes that they have, to see if they are as beneficial as they appear to be in other states. Other states do allow someone to bring in their drug and use it in there, we are not allowing that, so we're not sure exactly how it's all going to work as far as what the outcomes are, but that's something that we're doing as a pilot study, and we're gonna look at it, and if it's beneficial, then we will be able to expand that to municipalities that are open to having a harm reduction center in their municipality. We also made birth control available at pharmacies, and believe it or not, Groton is one area where many women live in a contraceptive desert, we call it, where they don't have access to a physician or clinician, and therefore, sometimes they don't have access quickly to birth control, and we wanted to make sure that that was not an issue that women had to face. So currently, pharmacists, after taking some training, will be able to do a health assessment, so if there is a woman that needs access, they can go to the local CVS and have a health assessment, and be able to get a prescription for birth control over the counter, and as soon as we pass that law, the FDA made one particular pill over the counter, so, you know, we're just like plowing the way for the federal government to catch up with Connecticut. So we also are doing studies on emergency overcrowding, maternal health, we passed a really big bill, we will no longer be having maternity wards in the state of Connecticut, we will be having birthing centers in the state of Connecticut. We looked at state staffing issues, because many of our hospitals are struggling for nurses and the correct staffing ratio, we could not get to where we want to be, there are many people that want to mandate X amount of nurses per patient, but there's just not enough nurses, so we are making sure that the people that are at the bedside doing the work are on the committees that helps set the ratios, so they're actively involved, not just management top-down deciding what's gonna happen. One of the bills that I'm most proud of is a pilot study for hospice and palliative care, and it's towards the end of life, there was a big focus here to allow Connecticut to be a state where, you know, some people call it assisted suicide, other people call it death with dignity, where you would be able to decide to take your own life at the end of your life. I did not like the way the bill's written for a variety of reasons, but as an alternative to that, what we heard repeatedly was people having very bad experiences with hospice at the end of life. And I've worked with Dr. Ellen M. and Yale to say, let's improve hospice at home at the end of life, so we don't have people that are in terrible pain or suffering. So we're doing a pilot study to bring the level of care that you can get in the hospital home. During COVID, that happened, it worked really well, there's different levels of morphine, et cetera, that can be given at the bedside, that are available in the hospital but haven't been available at home. So we're taking the hospital criteria and level of care to the home in a pilot study to see if the outcomes are different, which they should be, and also to measure sort of the quality of life of that person, and we think that's really important, and it gives people a choice, which we think, you know, for certain people, being able to have the end of your life at home is really important, we want to make sure that you're safe and comfortable. We are studying adult and child psychosis, we have a social media study that we passed last year, which I think is really important, myself and Senator Fazio put it in, our Groton schools have been asked to participate. It will be looking at the effect of social media, particularly on adolescent, middle schoolers, primarily girls, because if you do the, if you track the information, you can see, it used to be MySpace, I'm really old, I don't know if anybody else remembers MySpace, it used to be MySpace, then it became Facebook, and then it was Instagram, and all, you know, it keeps going, and as more and more social media has become so apparent, I mean, I see it with my 13-year-old, she's like a cyborg, this is like attached to her, that the rate of suicide in young adolescent girls dropped, jumped dramatically, it increased by like 400%. You see the check mark when Facebook came online. So we're trying to study, it'll be, it's the first of its kind in the nation, with University of Connecticut, we spent last summer sort of setting the criteria, we should have information back to the legislature, hopefully by mid-2024, and we're hoping that the information we get out of it will help us be smarter in how we set policies, and how we allow or disallow, or need permission to use social media, because there's absolutely, you know, no doubt, just from the data that we've collected so far, that it has a huge determinant on the mental health of young children. And I mean, we all think about the things people say about us online, can you imagine being like 12 and not being able to understand how to manage it? And it's really, when we see that causing suicide in young people, something has to be done, because it's really wrong. So that's a study that we're working on. And eelgrass, which is super exciting, we are entering into an eelgrass task force, and we've actually been able to find eelgrass in our area, which is great, because our water is so clean, we're trying to figure out a way to restore eelgrass, and they have And they have some really, really cool ways they're doing it now. They actually attach a seed of eelgrass to a clamshell. And then they plant the clamshell, like you would a seed, and then the eelgrass grows. And it's, without eelgrass, our whole micro system of our environment and our water dies. So the fact that we have it here is great. The bad news is we don't have it a lot of places in the state of Connecticut. So that is something that, I'm on that task force too. Are you on that task force too? Yeah, we have a meeting tomorrow. And those are some of the things. I know not everything affects municipalities. You have all the information on the voting. I think early voting is going to probably have municipalities have to get used to things because there's a lot of things that'll be different. You know, the Dropbox, early voting, how you manage that, how you, you know, secure it, et cetera. And there may be costs associated with that. So there was supposed to be funds set aside to help offset the costs. The budget that we passed, I sit on appropriations. So I thought our appropriations budget was really great. And then it went higher up to the administration. It came back looking a lot different than when it went in there. But I still think it is a good budget for the effort that was put in. There's certain things that I would have liked to seen in it that we didn't get. But we did, or we were able to give to the state of Connecticut the largest tax decrease that anyone has seen. And especially for our seniors. Because in 2017, we passed the law that we were going to phase out the tax on pensions and their retirement income. But we didn't have the funds to be able to do it in one year. So we were kind of phasing it in. In this budget, we're able to expedite that. So next year, if you're a senior and you make under a certain income, which is a pretty large income for people on retirement, you won't be paying state income tax. You won't be taxed on your pensions, which is a huge savings for elderly people that are, you know, on a fixed income. So, and there's a lot of good things in there. We tried to keep the funding for our schools stable. I know that Groton got an additional grant last year that was run, that was in the back of the budget. That is not something that is guaranteed every single year. It was kind of written in and thrown in the back of the implementer. They did not receive that this year. That's something that is not a guarantee. That's extra. So we can all try to work to provide extra funding for them in the future. But those are just some of the new things. There is some stuff for like registered sex offenders that your police will have to deal with this year. You have to go and verify the person's at the address every 90 days. All of that detail is in the books that we made copies for you. So I thought maybe if you guys want to look at everything and if you have questions on it, you could let us know and we could get back to you because it's easier to look at it in writing to me than it is on the screen. So if you have any other questions, we can all answer.
Okay, thank you. We're going to open the floor for discussion. Councilor Sheffield, you had your hand up.
Thank you, ma'am. Representative Baumgartner, my question was regarding the prospect of Spanish forms for any violations, any complaints filed in Spanish. Now, how would residents access that? How would they, is there something they, where they can go to get those forms? What type of program is set up so they can file those complaints in Spanish?
Yes, every municipality is required to provide those complaints. I know the city does already. And so they would, each municipality that has, you know, a building department under their purview. So obviously, the city does have one. They would be required to provide in both English and Spanish.
Okay, so it wouldn't have to be a state form. It could be a local, okay.
That's correct.
Very good. Well, thank you.
And you might need to, if you don't have a Spanish-speaking person on staff, remember, the residents will most likely write in their native language if they request the form in another language. So you should make sure that you have some technology to translate that for your English-speaking staff.
Councilor McCain.
Thank you all for coming in and sharing what you've been hearing with us. I had a question about the food waste. How would that be implemented in a city? I try and imagine a special tragedy and, you know, it was.
You would have a special, well, there's a lot of different ways. I mean, Stonington has been doing it for quite some time and it's been pretty successful. But Stonington has a very homogeneous population that's all on board. So it's, 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 not everyone's going to want to do it. I can tell you, I went to Milan, Italy right before Christmas, like three years ago, four years ago. And my husband was terrified because he thought I was going to buy all this like high-fashion stuff. But I, all I did is look at trash for a week. They have a system which you could implement here if you wanted to. And basically, it's, they have, they use special bags that are of plastic material, but plastic is a property, not a material. So it's made out of a material that comes from plants. So everybody has these little compost things in their house with this bag. And all the food scraps go in the bag. And the bag gets put into a larger bag that has, you know, the same material. And it is so strict there that even the apartment houses, it's like paper, plastic, food, and then newspaper. And they have trucks that come around, just like your garbage truck, and they pick up the food. And it gets delivered to the anaerobic digester. There are companies that will come and pick up the food scraps for you. You can contract with them, or people can pay to make sure that they want, if they want a compost, that somebody will pick up their compost material. And it goes to an anaerobic digester, which is basically this building that all the organic matter goes in. And it's turned slowly. And in 45 days, all that organic manner, matter, the gas comes off the top. It turns into this amazing loam. All the wet water that's in the food or the banana peels, you can use a reverse osmosis system. So at the end, you have pure water. The ones that I went to were amazing because the city of Milan produces as much garbage as the state of Connecticut. And they have all this loam and they power these amazing greenhouses from the gas. And they use the water from the food to water all the plants. And they have a program where they, they have, it was mostly women that were opiate addicted that wanted a new chance on life. And they came and they worked in the greenhouse. They were bound to bring, allowed to bring like their service animals. So there's a lot of dogs. And when I was, I was there, they were doing like the point steadyos for Christmas. It was amazing. I would love to duplicate that here because not only are you taking food scraps out of the waste stream, which makes your incinerators burn more efficiently and cleaner, you're giving people a new chance on life if you, you know, use their model. And you are capturing the methane that is produced, using it. They reused it in these little trucks that would go around and collect the food waste. And you're producing this amazing loam. And the city or the town could then either give the loam to residents or you could sell it. They sold it there. So it's really sort of this closed loop system.
Well, I'd be 100% all in on that. And just even to have that, almost like a co-op where I bring my scraps and I take some loam and, you know, keep, keep.
It would be great to get the city and the town and maybe a few other towns interested in doing it. If there's interest, then we can pursue really trying to push to get an anaerobic digester. One of the drawbacks has been, then you have to haul it to Southington. And Southington doesn't have enough near it to, you know, have it running at full capacity. So we would love to have one here in eastern Connecticut. It would help reduce your tipping fees. Because, you know, you know who doesn't like it? It's the trash haulers. Because the stuff isn't heavy anymore. When the truck goes on to, and is weighed, when you take all that wet organic matter out of the trash, your trash is a lot lighter. So they fought me on that for a couple more times.
There is a pilot program at UConn required this year. So UConn, Every Point should have some data that you, would be helpful before you pick up. UConn and our jails, we're doing a pilot program at both of them.
I think our schools should do it.
Our schools should think about it. One of the things that did happen in New London, some of the private apartments did try this. And they, so because you have a lot of folks living very closely in the city, I want you to be aware, it is great. But we also have to make sure that people are closing the devices correctly because there's an animal problem if the devices are not closed. And there's a risk for injury if you have, usually, you know, my job as a kid was to bring the trash out. So a lot of children were bringing trash out to the trash areas or to the food waste area. And if one resident doesn't close it correctly, you can guess how much fun that is for the animals. You can have issues. Some places have had to close them or no longer do them because of the risk of injury or because of residents not following. So there is a definite need for education. And you can learn from New London, some of the problems that they had and hopefully some of the benefits that we have at UConn, Every Point, right down the street.
Yeah, I think the difference, like when I saw overseas, was that everyone had their own special trash can for composting. So they weren't like bringing it to a central location. They took those little green, you know, bags made out of plants and they would throw them in there. So it was really just a container of bags. So we'll get there. Let's just.
Well, I think it's, just to piggyback off this, I think it's a good idea. However, before the state comes and gives me an unfunded mandate, I'd like to know if we can opt in or opt out. We also need to check with the residents of the city of Groton and see if they want to do it. In addition to that, there's, we already have some challenges with, with the single-stream waste that we have and separating and getting people to put the right recyclables in recycle. So now we're going to say, all right, now we got to do the same thing with the food because you can't just throw any and every food in there. You also have to be careful not to put meat scraps in there, right? No bones, no meat, that kind of stuff. So it's like, okay, take all your wet waste, oop, take your bones out, those kind of things. So you're right, there's an educational component. But I would want to make sure that the state has a bigger part of this so that it's not just another unfunded mandate that gets pushed down on the municipalities and go forth and do, and then we'll figure it out later.
Yeah, we don't need a mandate at all. It's just a, it's a pilot program to see if it works for you. I would support a mandate in any way, shape, or form. And you're right, that's one thing that we struggle with. You know, the mirror plant shut down and it's $50 million a taxpayer to try to clean that up, which to me is travesty. And we don't recycle in the state of Connecticut. We say we do, but we don't because we have a single stream. People don't rinse out like their spaghetti bottles. And then it has no value, value when it goes to the recycler. So there is a push for some to think about what we did years ago when we separated everything. And that takes education. I know, I kind of rinse that out. I can't just put that in. They call it recycling right. So.
I know.
But once you get in the habit of doing it, it becomes a second nature. It's just that, it's that impetus to learn how to do it and to make yourself do it. But there's, I'm not for mandates. So this would all be like if you choose to do it.
Got it. Councilor North.
I could just add to that too. It's also, it's a community drive. It's community in transit. Again, you talk about Stonington and how close they are. I don't know if you know about that plastic program that they're going through now. In six months, get 40,000 tons or pounds of plastic bags and get that out of the community. That's, that's just phenomenal. And that's why we want a community to do it.
Right. That's why I always thought if you wanted to do something like that, maybe start in the schools. Because I know sometimes my daughter would say, Mom, you can't do that, you know? So getting them engaged in it.
I agree. Large institutions that produce large quantities of food would be tremendous for a pilot, right? To get it started. And then once you show the, show the community that that works, then, you know, Lisa would have a place to take hers and somebody else have a place to take theirs. Because the other thing that I have is if the city has to do this, now I'm going to have to buy another vehicle maybe, or have a separate staff to go around. And so I'm looking at impact to the taxpayers. Is, am I going to need to buy additional equipment? Those kinds of things. So that's, you know, that's what I look at here.
I was thinking, if we, if you somehow prove that it works, right? And I'm just saying this up there, maybe you look at what your tipping fees are versus what it would cost. Or maybe there's some organization that will just do composting, you know, and you would make that up because you have reduced tipping fees because yourself is going to weigh less. But that's all, like, we don't have that data at this point.
Right.
This kind of started with, a lot of my farmers wanted it because they wanted to be able to mix their food scraps and their manure together because it's really hard to get. So we were able to pass something so they could have their own little anaerobic digester on their farm land to help that. And then it's just sort of spread out. So. But I don't want anybody to think that we would mandate anything. It's just sort of ideas that we can try to see how they work. And then you can choose if you want to do it or your residents do.
Got it. Did you, Councilor Piazza?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you all for your hard work and long, everful work. I just had a few questions, actually. So I wanted to start since we're talking about the compost. I'm a big composter myself, big into it and recycling. I, at work, I'll dig the plastic bottles out of our trash and rinse them and put them into something else. Because our, our company, actually, somebody takes trash cans to whoever's in need, basically, how it rolls, which I think is great. But with this said, as far as food composting, I was wondering too, since we have the recyclable bins, the ones that we can purchase, we also have the trash bins that we can purchase. I'm glad I finally did purchase it. But then I'm thinking of this as like you do a pilot program. If we could put in thought, maybe doing some kind of compost bin that the consumers who want to do it to try it out, and they could have it at their own home, and it's an educational piece, and they can teach their children, and then you're composting your own home. You know, because I, I mean, I do it already, but, you know, especially those who have grown gardens. By me, it's wonderful for a lot of things. So I was just wondering if that could be in discussion? Or if it already has been, I don't know.
Yeah, you absolutely could, could choose to do that. And that's why I was saying, like, you have the bin. And I can, you know, I can share with you the kind of bags that they use. They sell, they use them in Trader Joe's. It's the same material. And it's just easy because if you have like a little plastic thing on your, let's say, your kitchen counter with this bag in it, you can fill it up, you can just tie it and throw it in your bin. You're not like, I take my stuff and just throw it outside because I have a, not everybody has that kind of.
Right.
And my chickens love it. But, you know, not everybody has that kind of room. Or neighbors want to put up with it because it's a little stinky sometimes. But that's the whole idea. Make it as easy as possible for anybody who wants to do it. So it's not messy. You could keep on, you know, they have these little baskets that come with the, they're green. They're like these plastic bags that are made out of plants. And then they are actually organic. So they, they're biocompatible and degradable so that you can actually, they were just approved by the Food and Drug Administration where our farmers can use it. You know how people used to use that black plastic years ago? They can use this to keep like the weeds down and then till it under because it's food for months, et cetera. And that's what they use there. And it's, it makes it so easy that you don't have people saying, oh, that's gross. I have this slimy, you know, whatever tomato on my counter. So. But those are all things that are, could be on the table for sure.
But if I, I can quickly, the Sustainable Materials Management Program and the new grant program through DEEP for the management of solid waste, definitely, you know, look to those, those buckets to, you know, fund some of these pilot programs. You know, it's all about partnerships. And, you know, certainly, I know DEEP is very interested in engaging municipalities and partnering with, you know, even at a regional level as Senator Summers stated. So, you know, perhaps, you know, as you illustrated one example, I know Senator Summers illustrated several in Milan. There's no one-size-fits-all approach. What works for the city certainly may not work for Southington, vice versa. So. But the, you know, this is the most opportune time to have those conversations because of those additional funding streams available.
Right.
I just want to mention that, don't forget your apartments, the safety of the apartments, but also your residents of the apartments. A lot of times, I think what came up in the committee I sat on when this bill came through was don't leave people out. So if it's, if it's only your single-family residents who are going to have access to the program or folks with over half an acre, then it might not be the right thing for a citywide program to be. It might be a fine thing for an organization to do. But let's not leave out folks who maybe don't have the same land access or apartment dwellers because they're still residents too, still paying taxes and still wanting equal access to all the good things that's provided.
I think that's why that little basket thing has been about works a while in Milan and the city. Because when you go to their apartment complexes, they have like the big bin for this, then they have a special bin for composting. And everybody would put in their, you know, compost material from these little bags. The bags make it easy. It doesn't, you don't have to use the bags, but it just makes it convenient for people. And they were holding on to, all the apartments do it. The farmers' markets do it. So they just are in the habit of it.
I think it's really important. I mean, because it just follows along to a camp that my daughter went to when she was in fifth grade. And they actually taught them there in the week that they were there about less food waste. And that they're, they set a goal right away at the beginning. This is how much we want less than this about food waste. And the kids became more conscious about what they put on their plate, how much they actually taking, so forth and so on. So, and they did reach the goal within a week. So it was great. But with composting mentioned, I want to tie it into when we talk about blight finds. So I've had a few residents either talk to me or email me in reference to no mow May. And I've brought it up a couple of times in our meetings. So there's some, you know, some people are very concerned about the insects because they're still on the leaves and the bees and their eggs in there and all different kinds of things that are great for the environment. And they didn't want to mow their lawn. and all different kinds of things that are great for the environment. And they didn't want to mow their lawn through the May season. But um, some people had gotten hit for blight, which I thought, you know, they wrote to me, I was like, oh, that's, you know, sad to hear. But there are signs. They said, well, there are signs out there, you know, maybe we could get that incorporated. It doesn't have to be an ordinance per se, but at least it would be, allow somebody who is looking at blight to say, hey, we're doing a no mow May. Maybe we need an ordinance for how wild you can allow it to go. But I just thought that was interesting because, you know, I, the people that I spoke with, I say, well, when you do that and you do mow, what do you do with your things? So obviously they're very environmentally conscious, I think, because they're saying, well, we use it for nitrogen for our ground. We have a compost. Not everybody, but most of them. So it was all tying one into the other. So I was just like to keep that in mind for blight fines that if you have a sign for no mow May, that they're aware. So nobody's tapping on the door and giving a fine for somebody who's trying to be.
Yeah, there's no mandate that the municipalities fine anyone for blight.
Okay.
It just gives them the opportunity, it's an option. The cities can fine for blight. And the, they can fine between a hundred to a thousand dollars. A thousand is for repeat offenders within a twelve month. But there's no state requirement that anyone get fined for anything. It gives the municipalities and their departments full powers to do what they think is appropriate. And if a resident didn't like what the city was doing, I'm sure they'd come here and talk to you guys.
Right, that's what they did.
And you could adjust if something happened. But there's no requirement that anyone do anything they don't wish.
Mm-hmm.
I think we probably all participate in no mow May because May tends to be a busy month at the legislature. So we all care about the environment. It might be because we're a little occupied and not home as much.
Uh, my other question.
We support it for the environmental reasons as well.
My other question, not, I think it's maybe more a comment when we're talking about increased suicide in girls. So um, I still hold my license as an RN and get all these updates and so forth. And I did just recently get the increase in suicide rate. Um, I have had two family members, I meet family members that died by suicide, which we say now, died by suicide. And uh, it's interesting when we're talking about the increase in girls. So what was interesting to me, and I've dealt with this when I worked in group homes, emergency placement shelters. So, and then just myself and my own family. So at thirteen, they can sign up to have their own chart and the parents have, don't have access to that unless necessarily mandated. So when you look at that and then you have these young girls looking for care, maybe they would get the care that maybe would be dismissed at home. Or maybe they wouldn't get it because the parents aren't involved. So uh, that's a huge issue to talk about and I'm not gonna get into it. But I just thought that maybe could be put back in the back burner that even mental health, unless it was something. So if they don't mention it, but might be on the verge, the parents aren't aware, you know? So that was very concerning to me, know that my child can have their own chart and that there's no access and they made appointments to whatever they want, birth control, blah, 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 blah. And, you know, whatever meds they're taking, I'm not aware of. How would I even know to look for side effects? So, and then I was just wanting to know about the morphine at home. So um, my head, my father was on hospice. And we did have pain meds for him, um, but we were taught that. So I might have, um, maybe I don't quite understand. So I thought.
It's for the last fourteen days of life approximately, right? So I know you can't, but if somebody has about a couple of weeks, you know, if you're hospiced enough, you can tell there's some doctor signs. That you would, right now, there's a certain level of pain enhancement that you can provide in the home.
Mm-hmm.
But this would allow through technology and under a doctor's order for a registered nurse to be able to deliver higher doses of liquid morphine at home at the bedside.
Okay.
So that you'd be able to get more pain relief consistently, even have breakthrough pain, you know?
Yep.
What happens is when somebody has so much pain, they end up having to go into the hospital or hospice, into the hospital.
Right.
And this is keeping the person at home um with twenty-four hour care through technology and nursing. As a pilot study, it was um a suggestion after dealing with the head of palliative care and hospice care at Harvard, Harvard and Yale, that we need to fix the issues that we have with hospice at home because people think, oh, I'm gonna get a hospice. My mom's in hospice now. They think that if you're gonna get hospice, that that nurse is there all the time. She's not. She's there a couple of hours.
Right.
And then it's left to the family. So this was sort of a change as an alternative to what we heard consistently in our hearings on assisted suicide or death and dying is I had a bad experience with hospice. My mom was in pain and um, I don't, you know, that's why she shouldn't have been able to take her life. So the doctors have said, let's fix the problem with hospice and palliative care to see if we can, you know, change that. Because if we can make somebody comfortable at home, maybe they will not choose this X, Y, and Z alternative. So that's where the whole thing came out of.
Right.
But it would be very regulated. It's a pilot study.
Right, totally get that. Um, and then, so that just leads into my last question, I believe, is um, when we talk about, when you were talking about um birthing centers instead of maternity wards and that you said state, that they couldn't get enough nurses. Now, was that just from maternity itself or is that statewide, US-wide?
Nursing problem. I mean, we are, we need three thousand nurses a year and we're producing twelve hundred. So we have a chronic, well, we've had a chronic problem, but now it's just exacerbated because we have people that are leaving because it's just high stress and mandated overtime. But the birthing centers and the maternity really has nothing to do with the nursing shortage. It's just we're, we're basically, if you're gonna build a new hospital, it's not gonna be a maternity hospital, it's gonna be a birthing center. And um, that doesn't mean you're getting rid of your maternity wings of hospitals. It just means they'll be called like birthing centers within a hospital. They're supposed to be owned by, you know, one of the hospitals. And um, the requirements will be different. They will be specially and intentionally trained in maternal health, et cetera. We're trying to combat the infant mortality rate that we have and maternal health issues that we have, especially with African Americans in this city.
Okay, great.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor Depo.
Thank you, Mayor.
One thing I should mention, low sit funds. Um, in the budget that we passed, I thought this was important for you. They, um, going forward, they will have to be issued to the municipality by June thirtieth so that you're not hanging out for funds. And you can also use those for tree removal now, uh, which you weren't allowed to do in the past. If you had a bunch of trees, you know, how expensive it is to take down trees.
Yep.
You can use those ones for that. Do you use your own tree taking?
Say again?
Do you have your own folks, I mean, do you have in-house people that take down your trees or do you have to like outsource them?
Uh, we, well, for the utility, we have a service that we use. And then uh, our guys for roads and highways are trained to remove trees. So we do that as well. But in our park, we're gonna have to uh, outsource that.
Do they get to a certain height or something?
Well, yeah, for the health of the tree. So, so anyway, Deputy Mayor Depo.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so thank you all for all of the information. I think um, it's really helpful for residents. I actually in the last couple of months have run into residents who've said they watch our meetings. And I'm like, thank you. Because I know not everyone can take the time to watch them. And they're on YouTube, so you can watch them after the fact. I know um, for me, like town council meetings, I can't always watch on a Tuesday, but they're on YouTube, so I can listen to them later or whatever. So um, I just encourage people to do that, especially because you guys just gave us so much information. So I just want to encourage people, like if you maybe listen back to this again, um, because I think uh, even knowing which committee everyone's on is super helpful because then you know who to contact for uh particular things. But um, so a couple, on a couple of things that I have um, questions about, I guess. One of the main complaints that I have, going back to uh what Representative Baumgartner brought up in the beginning about housing, what, that is one of the main complaints that I get from residents is there isn't enough housing. Uh, when, I think that's a nationwide problem right now. So what at the state level have we done or are we looking to do or um, to help mitigate that? Like, and I, and I don't even know like what the ideas would be, but it's, I know here in the city, we have issues with, you can't control what building owners do, right? So we've got um, kind of dovetailing with that issue is the town and the city, we have vacant buildings that are just sitting vacant because building owners either don't know what to do with them, don't want to do anything with them, or um, there's not enough interest, costs are too high, those kinds of things. So what at the state level can we do to either help people find housing or help encourage building owners? Because when you drive around, there are buildings that could be apartments that are just vacant, um, or, you know, vacant land or whatever. So is there something that we can do or we are looking to do to improve that? I know there are some building projects in the works, but um, all of the ones that I've seen, the, the new apartments popping up are astronomically priced. So I know New London, there's at least three that I drive by that are recent or current, currently be, being built. And um, I believe like a studio apartment is sixteen hundred dollars. And the, the average person can't afford that. I mean, that's more than my mortgage. So um, I guess that's, it's kind of a broad question, but like, is there anything going, going on right now that is working on that issue?
So we passed a really good housing bill, but it could have been better. Um, unfortunately, a lot of our more progressive thoughts on housing that would solve some of these problems. A lot of our communities that were more residential based, not as mixed use based as the city is, objected heavily and residents within them objected heavily. All of our, what we did pass is more housing um, for veterans, which is very important and will affect us. Um, and more grants and more money going to offset veterans' housings through the state of Connecticut. So that will affect us in a positive way. Um, we had a desire, I had a desire, many had a desire, um, to do more transit oriented development, which the city, now the city of Groton and the town of Groton both meet the minimum required um, housing. But just because we meet the minimum required affordable housing, doesn't mean we're all done. Because we need more housing that's affordable. Um, in New London, their new buildings do have a percentage set aside, twenty percent uh for low, moderate income. Twenty percent of that housing is income based. And on one of the brand new projects, an additional twenty percent is ADD or disability set aside. So, which is really, uh, the waiting list on that is wonderful. And hopefully more developers will be interested in that because there are state grants to offset those costs. Um, and the developers that have been coming through New London have been made aware of that and are excited about that. And the residents are really excited. If you can have your, your family member um, who has a disability, who can live on their own, but you'd like them close to you, uh, most people are very excited about that prospect. So.
Can I ask you a question about that? So are you saying like those buildings that currently like those, that people who can't afford that sixteen hundred dollars should apply anyways because twenty percent of those units are supposed to be priced lower?
Twenty percent of those units are set aside for income based housing.
Okay.
And an additional on this new, new one, that's um, open soon, an additional twenty percent, so a total of forty percent is for, is not going to be sixteen hundred dollars. Um, additional twenty percent is for intellectual disability housing. So folks who may or may not need uh income or may just need special um assessments, may need wheelchair, handicapped restrooms, things that they don't have, um, can get special things through.
I think the, can, the state of Connecticut has, oh, sorry, I'm very sorry, sorry, we're done.
Oh, thank you. Um, another thing with the transit development housing that we'd like and many of us would like, and I think a lot of the residents in this city would like, was offsetting and providing more money um, and more funding for housing near train stations, near bus stations, um, which we have plenty, while we don't have active train stations, we have train tracks, we have bus stations here, we have close proximate areas. There was a talk about zoning, um, planning and development to get rid of some of the minimum lot size requirements. Now, that's extremely controversial in some areas of the state, not controversial at all in the city of Groton because very few people have four or five acre lots in the city of Groton. I don't know of any, but there might be one that has, you know, a big lot size. Two, especially in our municipalities that don't have any affordable housing and aren't meeting the goals. Now, all of our laws that passed out of planning and development that we sit within did say that those zoning requirements were for the municipalities that don't have the minimum affordable housing. So it actually didn't affect us in any way. But again, if we can get more affordable housing statewide, it can help because some folks who work here may choose to have a little more land or may want to live in Stonington or Colchester, one of the lovely neighborhoods nearby, but still work here in New London, um, or sorry, in Groton. We need to do an awful lot more. Um, and I think I've been working with multiple developers who, some have had positive experiences in the city, in the town. And as well as New London, some have had negative experiences. I think the main thing is when a developer comes, I say, we need to have the meetings. And I've seen some in the city of Groton with the neighbors and the developers and the projects. So people can get off their chest their concerns. Can their concerns be remedied with a fence? Do they have, I know one resident in the city had a water, is there enough, you know, water and sewer allowed for this? Would this affect my water usage if we build this next door? Those are real valid questions. And I think when we bring the developers and the neighborhoods together early, a lot of those issues can be resolved. Some people may not like housing projects that's proposed and some housing projects might not fit the neighborhood. But if we get people talking, we usually can at least figure out, is it a good fit for our area? Um, there are, again, grants, there are CHAFA grants, there are brownfields grants because some of our areas are old, polluted and need to be cleaned up. There are a lot of grant opportunities that we can assist with.
And if I could jump in with that, it's not just rental units, it's also homes and condos.
Two family homes.
Especially in the state of Connecticut, now there's a big uptick in that affordable housing. In the housing complex where you can get discounted price on the home as well as mortgage.
And one affordable housing I saw that was approved not too far away, the affordable housing rate was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a sale price. Now, I don't consider that affordable housing. I kind of consider that more expensive than my house. So what is called affordable housing for the single family house, if it's three fifty and under, that's an awful lot of houses within the city of Groton. That's most of our single family homes. Um, so affordable housing is really more market rate or workforce development. Because when you look at that, a lot of us do live in what you're like, some people thumb their nose up at affordable housing. But a single family three fifty and under qualifies for a lot of these grants. And three fifty, although the market is yours shopping. Three fifty isn't what it used to be ten years ago, but three fifty is still a really good single family house.
Deputy Mayor Depo.
Well, Senator Summers had something to add.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have um, great programs, through the cheaper program. The problem is we have um, not, not necessarily Groton, but there are towns where developers propose affordable housing facilities and the town turns out adamantly against it because I, I believe there's still, I think we need a different name than affordable housing because people have this impression of what it is, what it's not anymore. You know, it's for police officers and teachers and really first time, um, people getting into the market, engineers at EB. You know, what we consider affordable housing, the rents are really not affordable, you know? When you talk to, you know, retired people, they're paying seventeen hundred dollars a month for affordable housing. So I think we, we all could do a better job at really describing what affordable housing is. And I think the reason why some of these bills have not passed, and, and I was a no on the transit oriented development because the state puts every municipality in one size fits all. And it doesn't work, you know, state, in the rural areas, like in Griswold and Ballantown. They have no infrastructure. They have no way to have like apartments because they just, they don't. And it's not close to anything. So they're, you know, there's rural communities that are adamantly opposed to some of this legislation. And I think we have to do a better job at making sure that, you know, our rural communities are incentivized because it is a little cheaper to live in some of these places, but it's far away. Uh, but they shouldn't be held accountable because they can't be to this ten percent mark around transit developed oriented. They, they can't support it. They don't have the infrastructure to do that. And there's no help for sewer and water and all those things. So if we could create legislation that wasn't a one size fits all, I think you could get a lot more people on board uh for some of the ideas. And also, there's a lot of pushback when um, certain, you know, it's not really an issue of Groton. But other towns, when you say to a town, if you don't get this number, then you're gonna be penalized. And the state of Connecticut is not going to be funding you the way that they should. What happens if you don't have developers that want to build there? So it's, you know, those are the types of things that have to be taken into consideration when you're, when you're looking at legislation. And, you know, I represent eight towns, so it's a lot different. I have to look at all of their interests. But I do think that we should talk about incentivizing developers to create affordable independent homes or affordable apartment rates. And there are great programs. If you do the numbers and you were a developer and you were able to access the funding that is available and the tax credits, you could pay for it yourself if you did, if you wanted to do it by having the appropriate amount of affordable housing. And it's, it's graded by how many bedrooms you have, you know? Uh, there's a big push for three, three bedrooms in an apartment for people that have children. Um, and sometimes a community won't want that many people and they'll fight back against it. So I think it's really good we're having this conversation. I think there's a lot more that could be done. I, I love what North Stonington did, this little sleepy town they have. If you look on Route Two, when you're at that roundabout and you just go on Route Two, if you look to the right quickly, you'll see all these little individual houses that are brightly colored and those are all affordable houses for veterans, which I think is great. So those types of things, communities could certainly encourage developers to come in and have conversations. I think the biggest thing, like Kristen said, is having a conversation with the developer, welcoming, welcoming them to your town. You know, they may come out with a plan that is not something that would fit within the town, but that's your opportunity to negotiate with them what you would be willing to consider um, in your town too.
And just in terms of um, again, Senator Summers illustrated how some of the more rural communities, for example, may have a totally different set of needs than, say, the city does. Obviously, uh, the city is um, much more dense than a lot of our more rural communities to the immediate north and offer and provide uh, you know, sewer service uh, in. and offer and provide sewer service and water, public water as well, which obviously is more difficult to build large-scale developments in areas that don't have any of those services and would be required to build a septic system. So, you know, the housing crisis is real. You know, talking to advocates in our community and certainly the Homeless Hospitality Center, for example, homelessness is going up in the area, and it's not unique to any one community. It's impacting all of us and folks who have never faced those issues in their lifetime as well, young people especially. So, you know, we are, we'll all continue to work together on these issues. But, you know, I'm glad we're having that conversation. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Depot.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Depot, please continue.
Another thing that I was interested in, so the state, if I heard you correctly, so the state is requiring now for us to have all of our forms be bilingual or if someone requests them to, for us to produce them. And then my other question about that is, does the state have a, so my concern about that is, if we, per se, we used to have a clerk who spoke Spanish. That, he, and he was Spanish-speaking, like it's not like he just learned Spanish for this job, so reliable Spanish speaker. If we, if a town doesn't have that, is there a resource at the state level where we can verify the accuracy? Because my concern is if we have someone translate and they're not a translator, because I think translating is different than speaking a language. I mean, I can speak basketball Spanish if I have to, but I'm definitely not translating anything, because I make a lot of mistakes. So, I, I think, does the state have a resource? Because that, to me, that kind of seems like an unfunded mandate if we don't have a person in that position. We were lucky for several months to have a Spanish speaker, and that was really convenient, because I specifically pointed lots of residents to him because he spoke Spanish, but we don't, no longer have that. So, is there a resource or some other way to fund that? Or what is kind of, was there thought put into how we would logistically do that?
So, the form required under that bill is the Housing Code Complaint Form.
So, it's just one form?
Which I believe is, in the cities, is in English and Spanish already.
It is, we did that.
That is required for all municipalities to be in English and Spanish.
So, is there going to be a push, though, to do more forms also in Spanish? I mean, I'm all for it.
Well, they are requiring, in that same bill, they require if you're a landlord, that you have to be able to provide the lease in the language that your tenant speaks.
So, that, and that's new in?
As a landlord.
It's a landlord, not a municipality.
Right, but that's new in the bill that just passed as well?
But as far as, there's a lot of technology available. I know, I use some in my other office, we use stuff at House Dems, they use technology in Senate Dems. Not every person who works at our offices speaks Spanish. That's something that you may want to look into if you were short Spanish-speaking staff to help. Because most folks, again, are going to fill out the Spanish forms in Spanish. And you're going to want to make sure that you understand the person's complaint and, you know, address it. So, you should look into some technology. I know some of your other town clerk form, forms are probably required to be in Spanish. So, your, our ballots, again, you don't do as many elections because of the November switch. Ballots are required to be in English and Spanish. A lot of our Secretary of State forms are required to be in English and Spanish. And it's a good thing to look into is the technology.
But it is not.
It is, but it is not required, that all forms are. A lot of our cities have all their forms available in English and Spanish. So, it might be something you want to speak to. How does the city of New London handle this? How does your neighboring cities and towns handle multiple languages? And Norwich has a lot of things that's available for their Haitian-speaking population as well.
Well, and just to piggyback off this, the question is, where do you start, where do you finish? How far do you go? How many languages do you do? So, what we've addressed, the way we've addressed it here is when there's a need, then we address it and we provide. For example, in Spanish, we were able to do that. And if we need to continue to do that, we can do that. The concern that I have with this always is going to be another unfunded mandate by the state. And yes, there's software and things like that that's out there, but it costs money. So, we're going to have to figure that out and decide how we're going to address this as we go forward. We are looking at this already.
And with respect to tenants' rights and housing resources, the Department of Housing is always available to provide any questions or answers to any questions you may have. All of our offices and staff can help facilitate those conversations, should you ever have any questions as well.
Thank you.
Please continue. You have the floor.
What was my other thing? Oh, so for, I think all of you mentioned for early voting, that there are grants available. Is that, are the grants intended to be for like additional forms that we're going to need? Or what is, what is that, what is the grant funding available for specifically?
You're going to need staffing.
You're going to need staffing, and there's going to be a cost, because it's, it's going to be, you know, a significant amount of time early. You're going to have to have, you know, people to be able to monitor the ballots, to be able to make sure that the box is secure. It's going to definitely have an impact to the cost.
So, the grant, the grants will be available to, say, maybe hire an assistant for the clerk?
For a period of time.
For?
Not for the whole year, for the early voting.
Right, right, but for like election season, maybe the clerk will have an assistant so that it's not just all added to her desk? Okay.
Well, I want to piggyback on that real quick.
But I have no idea how long it's going to last.
No, no.
Right.
I understand. But, but I need, I need to understand, who is it impacting? Is it impacting registrar or is it impacting the clerk? If it's impacting the clerk, then that's one thing, and that's where I'm interested. We already have a box, right?
A lot of it's going to be with the registrar.
So, that's what I thought. So, if it's with the registrars, then the town will have to figure that out.
Except for if you have to do it for your freemans' meetings.
What's that?
Except if your budget meeting is required, then you should look into.
Well, we're going to have to look into that to see if it is applicable to the freemans' meeting. I don't know that it is or isn't yet. Are you sure that it is?
I do not, so it is listed in the language Budget Referendum Vote. You have a freemans' meeting, which is different. So, my advice, not that I'm giving legal advice, because I don't want to violate the ethics and give legal advice when I'm not your attorney. My advice is to contact the Secretary of State's office and get a formal opinion as to whether or not you need to do that in writing, so you're not violating anything.
Yeah, I have that as a note to Secretary of State's Office for the Budget.
I don't want to tell you, you don't have to follow that, and then you turn out and you did.
I understand.
And then I have a maybe weird question that I don't know that any of you will answer, because I don't know if this was on any of your committees. But one of the laws in here is a reduction of penalty for people who breed dogs in their home. That if you, now, instead of a penalty, if you have more than two litters, you have to register. That's how it is now, it's changing to more than five. It would seem to me that that would encourage puppy mills. And that just?
No, I remember that law, that, that bill, but I don't remember it distinctly as like the details, but it was.
I'm just curious why.
It was opposite of what we thought originally, but I'll get you the details on it. Because it was, I'm not a puppy mill person, I would have never supported that. It was something like how, what, what a kennel, how a kennel is defined.
Right, so you don't have to register. So, previously, from what I read, is, you had to register if you had two litters or more, and now it's five.
X amount of dogs. I think they reduce the size of how many dogs you could have.
Per?
Per litter to be considered a kennel, something like that. It was very technical, but we can, I can look at it.
I know that's like a weird, really tiny thing, and it's not a huge issue, just kind of stuck out at me as like a very, it seems backwards.
To not, to prevent people from saying they were having a litter, but really running a kennel.
Okay.
Litter after litter after litter, like a puppy mill. So, I can get you all the details, because I know somebody who worked on that bill, but I remembered what?
Yeah, it's, it just seems odd.
Yeah, it was passed by the animal rights activists.
Right.
They asked for the law.
Right.
So, it's not a puppy mill law, it's meant to make sure that the animals?
Not be puppy mills. I think you could have like two litters a year.
Yeah, the animals are to be in safe sanitary conditions, and they did regulate areas that were not regulated before with air conditioning, making sure animals are fed multiple times a day. Some of the puppies didn't have to be fed multiple times a day, which they totally do need to eat. So, it is a good bill, but from the sounds of it, I know we all were like, is that?
That section seems weird, yeah.
But it is a good bill, and it's meant to make animals safer and sanitary.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Depot.
And then, I'm really happy, and I know actually I had spoken with Senator Summers about the birth control bill before. I think, you know, a pharmacist is more than capable, we've had now those medications for enough years, I think, that we, we know the side effects, and a pharmacist is more than capable of handing those out. And I get asked all the time, and I think, you know, you see people in community forums asking, hey, where's this, the best doctor? I don't have a doctor, I need a doctor, because it is very common for people to go years and years without a primary care doctor or whatever, but we still want to encourage people to take care of their health.
I'm trying to work on that, too.
Yeah, so I'm happy, like, to reduce more, reduce the barriers to people taking care of themselves, I think is a good, is a good move. And then lastly, I just wanted to comment about the in-home hospice. So, I have experience with in-home hospice, and I don't know how I would have survived having to go to the hospital frequently. I think a lot of people don't know that you can just do in-home hospice. And it would be, it isn't twenty-four-hour care necessarily. But I, I think it would be awesome if we encouraged more education, more access to those things. To me, that is the best option. And so, I'm really interested in the movement of that and to see, and if there's, I mean, not that I can do anything, but if there's any input that I can give on that, like I said, I have some experience with it. But I would be really for anything that encourages that and makes that easier. Because I, I agree, I think competent pain management keeps more people out of the hospitals, which, again, will help the nursing issue, because nurses are stressed. And especially acute nursing with major illnesses. If we could, could lessen the stress in the hospitals by encouraging that and giving more access and education so that people can stay at home, I think that would be awesome. And I think, my very last thing that I wanted to ask is, so we all know legislative session has ended. Can you, can any of you, either one, give kind of an overview of what your schedule looks like until the next session? What happens for the next six months to a year, or, you know?
What are we doing now?
Yes, so your session has ended, so now I know that you all have different, you know, representatives do different jobs than senators necessarily or whatever. But if you can give kind of a quick summation of like, what does the rest of your, this year look like for you as our representatives?
Same order we started, go ahead.
Yes, so as Senator Summers mentioned, there's going to be working groups that are forming now. So, many of us are going to be participating in several working groups and task force on bills that we've either worked on this previous legislative session or will be continuing working on from here on out. You know, I, I think actually you've kind of created an example, having, you know, continuing to have conversations with our municipal leaders. You know, when it, once the legislative session begins in February, all of our times will be much more limited. Just simply, the two, two and a half hour commutes, you know, sometimes can take up quite a minute, quite a bit of our time. And so, it's, I, I think critically important to know what our asks are early on in the, in the session. That way, we can hit, hit the ground running. We're collaboratively with our Senator and certainly the Senate as well, and our, and inform our committees about what our bill concepts will be. It's going to be a late start in February compared to the, in the odd years legislative session begins in January. In the even years, they start in February, so it's a short session. There are also committee bills, and I know both my colleagues can probably provide a little more context to what that means as opposed to a person, you know, and the odd year, odd years legis, odd year legislative sessions, we have the ability to individually propose bills. Whereas in the short session, there, the bills are proposed by the committees as a whole. So, it's critically important that we articulate what our asks are to our committee leadership and, you know, and the various committee leadership as well. But again, you know, we, we make ourselves available. I host once a week, once a month, coffee hours, infrequently hold roundtable discussions, town hall meetings. Certainly welcome each and every member of the council to, to attend those. And certainly, should you ever need anything, always available. And my staff is available as well to provide any questions you have to agencies.
Well, I guess my question, tagging off of that, is if we want to have you guys back before the next session, should we have you in December or January? And when should that be? December? Danny, could you take a note on that? Okay, and we will invite you early enough so that we can get on your calendars and you can get on ours, so that we can bring you back?
I am writing bills now. I'm writing a bill, the DOD held a meeting with myself and Anthony Nolan, the Chair of House Chair of the Veterans Committee, on a bill that they have requests for sexual assault services for veterans and folks. Hopefully, we can expand that to folks in the, who are stationed here or stationed at the Coast Guard Academy to give more services for treatment for folks who are victims of sexual assault. I'm writing a bill, I have a meeting tomorrow morning on expanding the right of, right of counsel, access for housing court and having free counsel. Right now, New London has that, Groton does not have the ability to have that, so expanding that through legal services. I sit on multitude of task force and workforces that are meeting, so we are writing bills today right now. So, if you have a bill idea, don't wait till December, please, tell us now. There's a multitude of groups getting together. Judiciary Committee, which I sit on, does meet outside of session. We, there will be judicial appointments, I believe, from the governor, and there'll be, you need, we did have a meeting last month about the tickets with state police and that investigation through the Judiciary Committee. I know Senator Summers was on a meeting today, which she'll talk about in Mark's Appropriations meets outside of session as well. So, we have, we still have meetings in Hartford, we still have meetings here locally, we still have business meetings. So, we are, while we are on break, we're not at all on break, and our staff is still here, and we are still here to help residents with needs, if they have needs with Husky, if they have needs with housing, if they have homelessness needs, any need that you have, if you're having trouble with a area, unemployment, any commission within the state of Connecticut, we have resources that can assist people, so please reach out. I know some of the prior counselors and prior mayor's secretary was able to point people in our direction. If you have folks who say, I don't, I need help, please point them in our direction, if it's a state service, we have folks who can help them.
Yes, you know, everything that both the representatives have said, I too am working on legislation in public health in certain areas. I'm doing a lot for some of our nursing home folks, staffing, how we discharge people in the hospital, and some others related to the Coast Guard that have, that are not with sexual assault, but with harassment purposes of laws that have happened in the past. And right now, I'm sitting on a medical records committee, a staffing committee, the environmental standards committee, which meets frequently, the workforce development committee, the IRAS committee, there's a lot of constituent work. I also sit on a committee to look at the healthcare that we deliver to the folks in the Department of Corrections, because we really need to do a much better job at that. We have an OPIET committee. And then, I'm working with some of our pharma companies throughout Connecticut and nationally to look at how we address the drug shortages that we have, because they are significantly impacting people, especially kind of like people that need certain medications to help pain, they can't get it. And you can imagine that is just horrific to think that somebody would have to be in pain because they can't get a drug that somebody should be able to manufacture. So, I'm working on that with the Department of Consumer Protection. And I will be attending a national Medicaid conference at the end of September, which is really important. Public health and human services sort of overlap a lot. Like, how do you use the Medicaid dollars that come from the federal government and, and really use them in a way where you can multiply them in the best way possible? Because sometimes the state has a match, sometimes they don't, you know, and how do you look at the levels? A lot of the services that we provide in the state of Connecticut, as soon as you hit a certain income level, you don't get anything. So, how do other states address, do they phase things in? You know, we have an opportunity to set our Medicaid rate at two-hundred percent of Medicaid rate, and things like that, it costs money. But how do other states leverage their Medicaid dollars better than we do? I went to a mental health conference a few weeks ago, it feels like forever ago, in Indianapolis. And it was, I will say, I have to give Connecticut, kudos, because hearing other states, how they're addressing the issue, they are so far behind what we are for mental health and the delivery of services and what's available. So, that made me feel really good, that we always feel like we're not doing enough. There's still much more to do, but we are so ahead of the curve compared to some other states. Everyone keeps saying, how did you do this, what's that bill number? So, I think it's really good to vote of those kind of things if you can, because I'm. So, um, I think it's really good to go to those kind of things if you can, because, you know, the more you learn, the more you can come back and share. And we also, I'm sure you all have a ton of constituent issues with eight towns. There's not a day that goes by that I don't have a super complicated issue that we can try to help somebody. And sometimes, as Christine has said, um, if somebody doesn't know where to go, if they're having problems with anything from DCF to an insurance claim that's not being paid by your insurance company, we can't necessarily make sure that it's fixed, but we can get you to the right people that can try to help you fix it. So, um, please reach out to us, we're all available. Sometimes it may take us a day or two to get back to you, because sometimes I get like three hundred emails a day, so it takes a lot to go through them. Um, but we will try our best to make sure that we can help you lead through the bureaucracy of the state of Connecticut, because I know it's not easy. So, we're always available, and Mariah's awesome, she's here, um, she knows all of our things, she'll help whoever, um, get you to the right place.
One of the things that I'm going to do is I'm going to send you an email regarding uh, Rainville. And Rainville down to to uh, Paquonic for the sidewalk and for the crosswalk.
What do you do the way or not, does that freeze?
Well, right now, it's a, it, right now, it's a worn path that people take. We evaluated and looked at actually doing a s- doing a cross- sidewalk there. Uh, but then, uh, my attorneys and the insurance company said, because it freezes and because you get water and all that comes out of there, you you're going to own every slip, trip or fall, uh, the city has decided that I'm not going to do that. And so, uh, but I am going to reach out to you guys with the concerns and with the information and research that we've done uh, and ask for help to try to get this on the state's docket. Because from the M lot, which helps some of the, the parking congestion we have with electric boat, and and it's parking is going to be a larger issue in the future, uh, we have a lot of people that are walking of that road. And s- even though there are sidewalks on Paquonic that they can walk up, it's not as direct a route. And so they're walking up uh, Rainville. And so I will be sending you an email, the three of you an email, uh.
Awesome, we talk to DOTs like every day, four times a day.
Right, so David, Mayor Depot.
I just want to say one more thing, I know, I know that we haven't done these updates in the past, but I I think it's a really good touch point. Also, just to be reminded which committee everyone is on, so, because it does help to know which direction to point someone in. Instead of sending all three of you an email, like, that I think, for me at least, it helps me as, you know, we are volunteers. So the amount of time that we contribute, i- it streamlines our ability to direct people to the right person and just brings up some of these issues. And um, I know that I go out and I chat with people, so now that I know some of these things that are upcoming or just passed, I can chat with people and say, hey, if you have a feeling about this, contact Senator Summers, contact, you know, Representative Conley, Representative Bungartner. If if you have an opinion on this thing, they worked on this bill, so so reach out to them. Um, so I, I just want to thank you again, because I I do think it makes a big difference. I know for me, it makes a big difference to get an update and to have essentially like a touch point in the year of this is what's happening now and a reminder to the residents, for one, what everyone looks like, because I know so many residents who are like, oh, I don't know who my representative is. Well, go back to August twenty-eighth and watch our meeting, they were all there, and so, um, it's really helpful, so thank you.
You reach out, if folks reach out and they're not sure where the line between the representatives are, don't worry about it. If they reach out, we'll help them, and we'll still assist them, so they don't have to look up and see, you know? Because not everyone is as familiar with the line as Andre and I are.
Right.
We're pretty good with it, uh, but folks are sometimes worried, oh, I know Andre, I know Chris, just, just call or email, we'll help you.
And I think we equally represent half of that.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Uh, Councilor Sheffield.
Um, how is the funding for COVID, uh, for right now, since we're anticipating a uptick in cases this fall? We have potentially a new vaccine coming out, hopefully in the next few weeks for the new variant. Um, how does the budget fit in with the prospects of a, an increase in COVID cases in the state?
Our actual federal dollars are mostly earmarked, uh, it's like even double earmarked. Double earmarked at this point are federal dollars, um, just like probably your city dollars are, that you have a plan. And we can always reassess plans if COVID gets worse or better. Um, our dollars came from the federal government, so if COVID ramps up to the point that federal government gives us more funds, we will happily disperse them and spend them. Um, that does mean more people get sick and possibly pass away, so I'm not looking forward to that. But as far as, you know, we do have a very healthy rainy day fund still, so we do have opportunity if we need to, um, spend money. And that will be going through the appropriations committee.
Yeah, that's pretty much it. I, you know, I I will, we are seeing COVID on the uptake, it is a new variant, uh, but many people are vaccinated. Um, that also gives you some immunity, and some people have just community immunity. So, no one has anticipated we're going to enter into COVID like we had before. You know, COVID that we saw was a disease that we had no immunity to, that no one had ever seen. It's similar to like RSV or the flu. We may have a new variant of COVID every year, that could very well happen, just like we have a new variant of the flu every year. Uh, but it's not, I don't want to say it's like, not going to, it is not anticipated that we are going to be facing a COVID pandemic like we did, you know, with first shortage of masks and PPE and all that stuff. So, um, you know, the best advice is if you're comfortable, get your updated COVID vaccine. Uh, I'm not mandating that anybody do that, you know, if you work in healthcare, you definitely should. Uh, or if you're not comfortable, you're starting to see more and more people, you know, try to protect themselves with a mask, so. But we do have a very healthy rate and date line, um, that we could tap into if needed. We do, we're pretty good, and Connecticut did a pretty good job. And I was on the rollout committee for the vaccine, getting the vaccine out, that's why we kept getting more, because we learned such a good job getting into people. But there were some tragedies, we have one of the highest death rates in nursing homes in the state of Connecticut. So, um, we don't want to have that, but we learned a lot, we know how to treat the disease, we know it works, what doesn't work now. So, we're in a much better place than we were, you know, three years ago, so.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Norris.
It's only twenty of eight, so we can keep going. Yeah, no, but one I want to say, living in Connecticut is great, because I do have the opportunity to travel. I have colleagues all over the country, if not all over the world, and sometimes in a conversation, it's like, you don't have what? You don't do what, y- you know, and where we're at. So, thank you very much for being here and doing everything you do. I have two things, both relating to health, one is mold. So during COVID, we learned very quickly, our school buildings have, for the most part, very poor ventilation, air turnover, all that wonderful, wonderful stuff, which now so many of them are realizing they're developing mold issues, or they had a mold issue. So I guess I'm wondering, um, as you work through developing standards, the schools, are they in the conversation? Because so many of them are already testing, and it's like, what are they testing? What instruments are they using, what's, what are they doing? So I don't know if that is being molded in to municipal buildings as large or residential buildings, apartment buildings, is it all encompassing?
What we wanted to do initially is to set the standard, right? And to have an opportunity to have a public hearing on the standard, uh, because as you know, as soon as you, uh, put a bill out, everybody in the world is a mold expert, they're all telling you how to do it, what to do it. So, um, and we have learned a lot, you know? For example, if you have an HVAC system that has mold in it, when you swipe it, all you do is spread the mold spores across the room. So how you clean things, all that will be in a PSA that public health will be putting together. So people understand, first of all, how do you housekeep to prevent mold? How do you kill mold if it's in your house, um, the proper way? So all that is part of that bill. Uh, but yes, those are things that we have talked about in public health, we do not want to mandate. I don't want to say that every municipal building has to do this, or every school has to do this, but there is opportunities that we have. Um, I think it was about ten million dollars that we set aside for schools to upgrade their HVAC systems. I know a couple of my schools up north were able to get the grants to be able to do that, because it's very expensive. But that started with humidity levels and how, what the temperature was, which also affects mold. So we're slowly making inter- incremental steps that way, um, to try to push the narrative. But eventually, you know, the, the first pass, so to speak, would be to set the standard for mold, indoor mold qualities in buildings that the state has paid for or municipalities have contributed to.
This just reminds me so much of how we went through the lead issue during the sixties or seventies.
Yeah, we're still doing now.
Right, and now we're doing the same thing with asbestos abatement in a lot of buildings, they're so similar. And the last thing is, we were talking earlier, and I can't remember your exact words, so I'm going to throw them out. Um, does south, southeastern Connecticut have a access, access to healthcare issue? Because we talked about, so then, so I I guess what I was going to go to then is, I I understand we were talking about birth control. Um, is there a bigger thought, plan, what are we going to do with access to healthcare in southeastern Connecticut on a larger scale?
That's a really good question. Uh, we are doing, um, a multi-pronged approach, because there's no one answer for that. We have a, we have passed, and we've worked really hard on this, to develop a recruitment, um, program for anybody who's coming to the state of Connecticut, who is a nurse or physician. We now have a loan reimbursement, where if you come and you work in X, in an area that is, uh, let's say, m- needing primary care physicians or a pulmonologist, or whatever it is where they don't have enough of them, nurses or just in general, then Connecticut will look at, um, repaying some of your student loans. It's on a first come, first served you, um, basis, you apply. That's not going to be enough, because we don't have enough money to be able to do that. Uh, but I would, one of the ideas or one of the things that I'm working on right now is to look at our school-based health systems that we have. So we have an incredible school-based health clinic program here in the state of Connecticut. Now we've opened up behavioral health clinics, sometimes they're in the same, sometimes they're down the road. But, um, one of the thoughts that we have is, if you can imagine, um, you're a resident, you have probably six hundred thousand, if not more, in student loans, because it's so expensive to go to med school, and, um, you know, you get out, you're working. That school-based health clinic at, let's say, Fitch High School, there's all this activity in the evening, there's no reason why that could not be open, and it could have the resident in there, they take insurance, if you don't have insurance, you know, they take Husky. Where that resident could moonlight, so to speak, in the evening, while the school is open, and keep that clinic open for access for people that can't get there during the day, they can't take time off from work, they want to bring their child in the evening. Um, and, you know, people have this misunderstanding that they don't take insurance. If you have insurance, you can still go to a school-based health clinic and it's reimbursed, or it's gone through your insurance. That would number one, give the resident, um, an opportunity to see different things. And instead of paying that resident, it would be sort of an internship, where then the state of Connecticut, if you worked X amount of hours, would make a payment on, in addition, towards their student loans. And that's the number one thing we hear, ma- medical malpractice in the state of Connecticut and, um, lo- loan tuition reimbursement. Those are the two things that everybody wants that's coming here. We also have made it a lot easier to be able to have a license in New York and then come to Connecticut, it used to be a nightmare. We're doing a lot of compacts for like psychologists, mental health workers, so that you can, um, the state of Connecticut will accept your credentials from another state. So if you want to move or telehealth, we have that ability. Um, so we're trying to do as many things as we can, it's, it's expensive to live here, uh, but it's beautiful, so people want to live here, there's a lot to do. Um, but one of the things we hear, again, um, loan repayment, medical malpractice is very expensive in the state of Connecticut. And the third thing is, a lot of the younger residents that come here, they want thriving cities, and we don't have that in the state of Connecticut. That's one thing that's tough. So if you're a young person, you're coming to, I'll pick on some town, I don't know, Volantown, there's not a lot going on. You know, it's hard to meet, like, you know, a boyfriend or a girlfriend, so, you know, versus going to San Francisco. Maybe I shouldn't have picked on San Francisco, going to, I don't know, Nashville or Boston or something like that. Um, so that's another thing, that's, that's a more difficult thing, I think, to overcome. And, um, Connecticut is an aging population, I even hear this from, from young EB engineers, they're like, what is there to do around here? You know, where am I going to meet a girl? And I'm like, well, I'm not sure that's the problem, but, um, you know, so, um, those are things I hear, I swear to God, I hear that a lot. That's why I'm reiterating it.
I see a lot from, oh, sorry.
Yeah, so I think, you know, we're going to do what we can from the public health, health point to try to encourage people to come here. Um, but the one, one of the, one of the bills that we did pass, this sounds like a really small thing, but it's a huge thing. Um, the state of Connecticut had this law on the books that said, if you are a clinician, for, it was mostly APRNs, PAs and MDs. So if you were working for Yale system, and you were, you got in, they said they were going to pay you this amount, you were going to work these amount of hours, and then you're, usually they have like a three-year contract. At the end of that contract, if they changed all the terms and said, you know what, we're going to pay you half of what we paid you before, you're going to have to work double the hours. You had a non-compete, so you could not leave or go work for a com- Hartford Healthcare. You had to stay out of the workforce and not get paid for a year. So what we've found, which is crazy, because in the real world, if you non-compete, you have to get paid, right?
It's not legally enforceable at all.
Um, but no small doctor is going to want to take on Yale, Yale Health System or Hartford Healthcare. So what happened is we found, when we were tracking it, that in, instead of doctors saying, I'm going to fight this, because I think I can win, they just leave the state. And I, we had, actually, no, I had four friends just leave Connecticut and say, I'm out, I can't work here for whatever reason. I'm going to go to South Carolina, or I'm going to go to New York, where they don't have a non-compete. So we were able to change that law, because it was affecting MDs, APRNs and PAs that were like locked in. Like, once you made the choice, you're in, and and nobody can afford to stick out for a year, um, and not get paid. And and they had this certain radius that they had to apply to if you went, you know, it was crazy. So we were able to kill that law, I mean, kill that bill or kill that, change that. So now they do have an opportunity, if they change, you know, your contract and make you work ten times the hours or cut your salary, you have an opportunity where you can say, okay, I'm out, I can go find something else, and I can stay in the state of Connecticut. So that will be a significant impact for nurses and PAs and and physicians. And we're so short physicians that it hopefully will make a big difference.
Also, last year, that law, um, started with CNAs, because CNAs were in that group too. They were told they couldn't work for another provider within a year, that has not been the law for over a year, most folks do not know that. If you are watching and you are a CNA, if that's in your contract, it's not, it was never legally enforceable, but clearly not legally enforceable under our law. Um, so folks don't have to move for that. But one of the big things that we're seeing, kind of a problem with Yale and Hartford Healthcare, as most of us know, our providers are now with the two bigs, um, is that a lot of our specialists are at Hartford or New Haven, and for a lot of our residents, that is difficult to get to. Um, we don't have the public transport to get people who treat Abacus over to Hartford at all. Uh, the public transport to get back and forth to Haven is difficult, if folks don't have a car, um, or a reliable vehicle. A lot of folks are treating more with their primary than they ever have, just because they can't get to the specialist. Um, so that's a problem we have to continue to work on, we've, we've put in bills about more access. If you know someone who is working as a resident and L and M or Abacus, tell them how happy we are to have them here, um, and that we want them to stay. If they're looking for a significant other, introduce them to someone. Say like, hey, I know my friend, you should come hang out with them. Um, you know, tell them Mystic is great, there's a lot of fun things to do here, and because we're kind of, you know, Connecticut Yankees, we're not always known to be the most welcoming, um, to new folks, and we really have to work on that with our healthcare providers. Everyone from the doctors, that, and the CNAs, folks who work at the hospitals, we need them to stay at Abacus and L and M and Peak Watt, because folks cannot afford to go to New Haven and Hartford. So we be welcoming, get out of our Yankee frustrations and say, come on, you know, let's go out to lunch, let's go out to dinner. A lot of folks do feel very lonely here when you move here. So I know the city does a good job on the website, on the social media, I said the beer run, we will have young people here. Um, we need to do as much as we can with young people to show them that, how much there is to do here. Because once you kind of get to know folks, meet your significant other, you stick around.
Okay.
Just to tackle the first part of your question, um, regarding the HVAC, again, Senator Summers brought up the grant program. Uh, Groton, I know the town, um, has a, on the docket, um, a few buildings or, uh, school buildings that, um, could use some HVAC upgrades. Um, tho- those pool of funds could alleviate that issue. Obviously, the city of Groton, uh, doesn't have the number of, uh, schools that they used to, but nonetheless, we still have one, and it's a new one. So, uh, that, that's not an issue with respect to, um, um, our newest school, um, at a Th- Thames River Elementary School. Um, but, um, I do, you brought up asbestos and and lead issues, um, do want to point to, bring back to the city again, a new grant program. Do wanna point to, bring back to the city again, a new grant program for municipalities with respect to fast contamination. Now the state has established a new pool of funds in the general fund to pay for remediation and testing for a public drink and water supply. So something to certainly keep that, keep in mind to reduce costs to the taxpayers and taxpayers.
Okay, thank you. Okay, never mind.
Well, just all the information, I just wanted to comment. So when we talk about specialists, one of the biggest things that, a lot of specialists do not take Husky, a lot. And I dealt with this, just not, just in my own life, but also too for the residents in the home, children under eighteen. And I would like to do many things. And one of the things I did ask was, some of them were not from Groton. So I asked if their nexus was not Groton, it was, cause there was one specialist that served certain counties. And I said, okay, so if their nexus is this count, is this in this town, we serve them. They did serve them. So it's just little loops and hoops to jump through, but there's a lot of specialists that do not. I mean, I even had APRN who ended up going to, she did physical therapy, and then now she's going to dermatology school, cause she said, we just don't have enough dermatologists.
We can assist people if they aren't sure with Husky. That's one of the things our offices can do. If they aren't sure who takes it where, our offices can help people.
But you are right.
But it's just a simple question that you just say, no, we don't take it, no, we don't take it. Do you know anybody else that does?
That's illegal now, actually. What they'll say is, my practice is full. That's the code word now. That's what they say. So when I run into that, I-
Is that even with dentistry?
No, dentistry is a whole other thing.
Okay.
If you have a dental issue, somebody on Husky D, send them to UConn Medical Center. That's where they'll get, I know it's a hall, but they'll get their wisdom teeth out, they'll get taken care of there. The dentists do one-
Is a local practice that does Husky?
There is, there is, there's more dental-wise than there is specialist-wise. But my other thing, when we're talking about meeting people, Nextdoor app is a great app, but there are a lot of people do, do mention when they, oh, I'm new here to Groton, I'm new here to the New London, blah, blah. I'm having a hard time meeting people. So there's a lot of people will, so if people don't know about Nextdoor app, it's great. Like you lost your dog, or blah, blah, blah. It's, I love the app, so it really helps out one another. And they kinda curtail a lot of the eh 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 stuff, which I like. In reference to when you're talking about, you had just blurted out real quick about unemployment, I did speak to you once about it. So I know that a lot of, so I'm gonna just address more of the people I work with. So a lot of the bus drivers do go on unemployment, even though they work part-time, yada, 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 and they get some supplemental pay. But we have quite a few single parents who lean on paycheck, paycheck, paycheck. So even this week for myself, even though I've worked some part-time, is that mine has been held for two weeks now, because I guess they throw it in a little jar, as far as I understand, you say, oh, let's double-check her. So then, you know, what do I do in the meantime? So if I have bills, I have this, I can't go to UConn now because I don't have gas for my car, blah, 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 blah. And I, I know it's, you know, it's a huge thing, but is a huge problem. So there was even somebody that, well, they couldn't get their resources over here, because they couldn't prove what they had here, if they actually got it, I don't know when I'm gonna get it, I'm gonna get it here, blah, blah, blah. So all their other resources that they're tapping in, trying to tap into are held up. And, you know, and then what do you end up doing? Then somebody, it's even happened to myself where I got behind something, and then they're starting to do late fees. And I say, okay, just, I'm gonna stop services, because I can't afford the late fees too. You know what I mean? So that's, it's just a rolling thing.
We can help folks with their accounts. Please tell them if you know someone having issues with unemployment to contact them.
I'm sorry?
We can help people with their accounts.
Okay.
We can, we cannot personally unlock their accounts, but we can get the information to the people who've had. So folks are having issues. We, we are the help center for unemployment.
Yes, we are. Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you all for coming out. And we will be in touch with you definitely in the future for December, but also probably individually between now and then. So thank you for what you do for us.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care. Great discussion.
Okay, Mary. So we're gonna go to, we're gonna continue on Parks and Rec. The auditorium application update is informing.
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, Mayor and Council. So the first one, like the mayor said, is the auditorium application. I know back on July 3rd, the auditorium transferred by resolution from the city clerk's office to the Parks and Recreation Department, and there was some discussion or concerns about the application that existed. So we took what we kinda do with the Zaburski House, and we kinda just melded them together. So it has the information that was part of the resolution, then it has, you know, it has our, I always say this word, we're about demification information that we have from the Z House on the back. So it covers all the stuff, the aspects that we have. In discussion with the mayor, I will also add, in our, in February, when I come to the mayor and council with our user fees, and we have the Zaburski House user fee, things, information broken down, we'll add a component of the auditorium. Cause like, there's a Zaburski House, like civic groups, state groups, different government groups, we don't charge. So we'll build that in, and we'll have that in our user fees, so that way, but the general, just the general fees for hourly rates will stay on the application, and everything else will be shared. So I do know that was kinda discussed and made as a referral, so I just thought, so we could move forward, I'd bring this to you guys as information tonight.
David, Mayor Depot.
I was actually gonna comment, I really like that it's very similar to the Z House form, cause it makes it familiar. I recently filled one out for the Z House. Are these, the fees that are on here, is that the same fees that has been, or is that what we usually have always charged for the auditorium? So it's fifty dollars per hour for a city resident, and seventy-five dollars per hour for non-resident. I think that's very reasonable for the giant auditorium and use of all the chairs and, and stuff that are in there. And I also just wanted to comment on paying a staff person, cause I don't think people realize that if they're going to rent it in off-hours, there has to be someone to unlock the building. And I know a lot of companies might just make someone come in and, and not pay them extra to do that. So I am happy that, you know, people who come in on their off-hours, when they're not expected to, should be paid to do that. So I'm glad we're including that, to be paid by the person who's renting it, because it's difficult sometimes to absorb that cost.
And we do that now with the Zaburski House too, so if they have alcohol, the alcohol parties. So it kinda already have that language with that too, so.
So yeah, I'm, I'm glad we're doing this, and it just, I mean, for me, I always forget that people can rent it. So it's raised my awareness to mention to people that it's an option.
So I wanted Mary to bring this, so that we could talk about it, just real quick, to let you know what we're doing here. Because you have the resolution, and then you have the forms that are separate. We talked about, do we want the forms in the resolution? If you do that every time you change the form, then you're gonna change the resolution. So I said, let's bring it to the council, so they can see what the forms look like, and then we'll incorporate it into February, when we come in with all the other forms that is captured that way. So any other questions or comments on this? Okay, thank you. Moving on. Press boxes.
So over at Washington Park, we have five ball fields, of which three of them have press boxes. Well, two of them, two of them don't have them at all anymore, cause they've crumbled. So we've been taking this out to bid since February of 2020, to try to get Field One, which is the large softball field at the corner of Mitchell and Meridian, and the large baseball field, which is in the center of the complex. Fitch High School girls softball uses a large softball field, UConn Avery Point, Grasso Tech, sometimes Fitch JV, baseball uses the Field Three during the course of the season. So these, Field One has, the, the press box that was existing for a number of years has fought, has been pulled down. We lost the roof one year, and then it just kinda started to crumble, so we've taken, we took it down. Field Two, Field Three has been condemned by the building official. We haven't taken it down yet, but we're not letting anybody use it, cause we wanted to make sure if, when we did, cause we've taken this out to bid five times, we wanna have something for people to look at, so they know what we're kinda, what our concept is for inside with a table for a working station and everything else. So we finally took this out for bid this past month. We got two quotes in from two different companies, Doyle Building LLC and G Donovan Associates. So we would like to make a recommendation that we go with Doyle Building LLC to, to complete press boxes on Field One and Three. We did do an add-alto to do a Field Two also, which is the Little League Field. Our Little League Field right now is not officially, official size. So we wouldn't be able to do any kinda like All-Stars, or anything that would incorporate a larger game than just their regular season, cause our right field line is not two hundred feet. And that's just due to, there's a dugout on Field Three that kinda makes it not be able to go that far. It's a hundred and eighty-six. So with that knowledge, we figured we would earmark some of the dollars, set aside for press box on Field Two to some other project, and, and pass on adding the press box to Field Two. So we're coming to you to do Field One and Three.
Okay. Questions or comments? David, Mayor Depot.
I mean, I just wanted to comment, I, I know we've been quoting this for a long time, and it, and it is something that I get asked about occasionally, because it, because we haven't had them. How long were the other press boxes there for?
I'm thinking they're original, so the lights have been there for over twenty, the former lights were over there for over twenty-eight years. So I'm thinking they're around the same timeframe, probably twenty-five to twenty, twenty-five to thirty years old.
And what is the life expectancy essentially for the new press box?
So these are, are gonna be built to current building code, so they'll withstand the one hundred and twenty mile per hour winds. They're gonna be on, the old ones used to be on cinder blocks. These are gonna be on actual, if I could, they're gonna be on actual concrete columns that are to coat.
That are gonna be sunk.
Sunk into the ground, and then it's gonna sit on top of those and be secured, and the nature that it needs to be secured.
So we can expect these new ones to last a little longer, because of the new clothes?
Probably twenty or more years.
These, our old ones had flat roofs, these are actually gonna be shingled roofs, they're gonna have siding on them, they're gonna be protected. The windows used to be, the windows, the fronts where you, where in front of the field, used to be open. There was nothing there to close off, so all the elements came in. These are gonna have drop-down doors, so that way they're enclosed, so that way we can keep the rain and the snow and everything else from inside, going inside.
And if you went inside before, you had two-by-four construction, you had plywood construction, and it would get wet and rot, and, and that's what happened. I mean, when I went into one of them, the floor was spongy. And then I got out, and I had somebody of normal size go in, and the floor was still spongy. So that's when, and we started talking about removing. I mean, in the very beginning, we went out with an RFP, and the first quote was two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Okay?
That was for one.
That was just for one. So we've been, I, I recognize that this has taken us a while to get there, but we're now there, and that's why I wanted to bring this to council, so that we can get it authorized, and then we'll move forward, so we'll be ready for the next year. David, Mayor Depot.
That was gonna be my last question, is, so we expect this to be, these two press boxes to be complete before the start of next season?
They'll be done by this fall.
Okay.
The, the bid packet-
So they're gonna do it before the winter?
Yep. His, his goal is, his, his start date on the bid packet was September 1st. Obviously, I had to share that, that wouldn't happen, cause we still had to get it approved, but with completion date on November 1st.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this? Counselor Norris.
Just real quick, so are these as-built, are they prefabbed, are they engineered? Are they, what kind of press box are they?
So it's not, we, we tried to do a prefab where they, they built in and brought it in, and we didn't get any quotes on that. So this would, I don't, I apologize, I don't have his actual bid in front of me. But he's going to, it's gonna be a wood frame structure on the sonic, like the concrete necessary bases. It's gonna be shingled. It's gonna have a built-in works shelf in the insides, all, so it's all built from scratch, pretty much.
And it's gonna be sealed, so that we don't have the issues we had before.
Metal doors instead of wooden doors, so there's no, so they're secure, a little more secure than the current ones that we have right now.
There, there's some lessons learned that we have from before. I mean, I mean, they weren't, we have some lessons learned, and we're gonna incorporate those into these buildings. These buildings should last for quite a bit longer. And also, in addition to that, you and I have had discussions about asset management plan. Mary and I are working on an asset management plan for all of our assets. And then the inspections on these are gonna be part of that, to ensure the preventive maintenance ongoing for this. Any other questions, or Counselor Sheffield?
What's the add alternate amount?
It was twenty-six thousand and change.
And that's for?
That was for a smaller-sized press box on Field Two.
And we're not doing-
That we're not gonna do.
Okay, so that was the purpose of that. Okay, sure, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of September 5th, 2023.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, guard rail.
So the next one is, anybody that's familiar with Washington Park, we currently have dropped, we have utility poles sitting on concrete bases to delineate between the parking lot and the grass. So we'd like to kinda pretty that up. So we've gotten, we, the area by, the end of Park Avenue, when you come into the park, by the bathrooms, the parks avenue bathrooms, that area, there's guard rail, there's utility poles dropped, so we wanna make that a permanent guard rail that goes from Field Four, behind the restrooms, up and around Pavilion Five, open, opening for the sidewalk that takes us to the tennis courts, and then up and around by, up by Pavilion Six. So it would be the wooden, you know, what size is it? Ten-by-ten posts with the wood planks across, secured, so that way it would look a little prettier, than dropped utility poles that are sitting on concrete. We bid it out for five hundred and sixty linear feet. The quote that we got from the lowest bid, we could potentially do a little bit more, based on the, the quote we got and the monies that we have. So we're working with the contractor to see how much more we can do. Our goal is to eventually do the whole park where these utility poles are dropped, so that there's a beautification to the park.
And these are gonna look, I meant to, the picture that you sent me, I tried to find it, I was gonna pass it on. Do you have a copy of that?
I do not.
So these look like the merit parkway fencing, so it's similar to that? Who had a question? Counselor Sheffield?
Yeah, Mayor, I guess certainly a great price bid, I guess, that we got on this compared to the other bids. I was wondering how fortunate we are, I guess, considerable decrease to the base compared to the other contractors. Have we done a, like a background, as far as what type of business they've done to have this?
Gateway has done, currently, the last project they did for us was just within the last two years, they did the outfield fence of Field Three. They've also done way back when they did the basketball, down at the beach, the, the fence around the basketball court on Beach Pond Road, that side of it. They've also been involved with some of the work at the Summer Memorial and their guard rail fence.
So we've worked with them, we have a history with them. They're not a fly-by-night company. We, we recognize this a little bit, we're happy, just a little bit to that amount. Because what I didn't, what I did not wanna have to do is go buy telephone poles, not telephone, well, actually, grind utility poles, and put them in the Ucups. We wanna, we wanna clean this up and, and make the park look better, and this is the first phase of doing this. Counselor Norris.
I apologize, but what was the add-alto?
Oh, paint, stain. Staining them, having them stained before they were installed, so.
So we get, so we get municipal grants and aids, and they can be used for road projects. If we decide, and this, we actually found that this meets road projects. But if you, if it's not a definite road project, you can put in and ask for an alternate use, and we have used that money. But municipal grants and aids is for road projects.
But that's the actual name of it?
Yes. Yep. And we have money says, because we have to tell them what projects we're gonna use the money for. Any other questions? Okay. I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of September 5th, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
Linda Sue?
Off to the movies.
So for those of you that have forgotten, and for those of you in the audience, we're doing a movie night at the beach tonight. It got moved from last week because of the rain. All right, next one is human resources, non-union employee handbook update for employees hired on or after- eleven-one-two thousand and eight. And we've come to you before, but there's been some discussion internally and as a result, we've wanted to clean it up a little better, bring it to you. So, and with that, I'll turn it over to Linda.
Hi, good evening.
I actually turn it over to Sue. Sue and Linda, and then somebody else.
So back in July third, you had approved the resolution, the change to the handbook for the non-union employee, hourly and salary employees. And since then, we realized that we needed a lot more changes to clean it up, to make it more clear, to implement these accruals into the time, vacation banks, not only for the employees, but for finance and for the H.R. Department. So we went through the whole section, the vacation, the vacation section and made some changes. You have it in your packet, it shows what exists now and it's redlined to the new changes. Hopefully, this, the first year of employment up until their first anniversary date, it gets a little complicated because it's a monthly accrual. And then after their first year, it goes into a yearly accrual every January. So that first year got a little tricky when we were trying to put the time in their bank, so hopefully this makes it better for everybody. The only additional change, so the amount of hours and days that are given to the employees hasn't changed, just the language. But one other change that we did feel was right was changing from a fifteen-minute accrual for using their vacation time to an hour minimum, because that's the standard for businesses instead of doing the fifteen minutes. But other than that, it's just to make it more clear.
Any questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Depot.
I just want to comment, and I probably said this to you before when you were working exclusively in the mayor's office, I love redlined documents. I love to see the changes, because it's just, you know, we haven't looked at it in a couple of months, so it's so much easier and then some of these have even the date that they were changed. That's very helpful. I love the clarity. It is much clearer, the new language on that. As, you know, I think we've all been new employees at some point and when you read the whole packet of paper, one of the big questions is, what's my vacation time for the first year? And if you can't understand it, you might, you might not be bold enough to go, I don't understand what this means. Like, so I really like the clarity. I think it's important and I think, you know, I'm always very pro making our employees' lives easier and I think this does that, so I think it's a good move. Thank you.
We also, H.R. and Finance work together because when you looked at it before, H.R. looked at it and read one thing, Finance looked at it, read another thing, and so Finance is the one that's having to coordinate this. And so we got H.R. and Finance together on the same page. And so I think everybody's now in agreement and that's why we want to bring this to you.
One additional change I didn't mention is when we do have changes to the handbook, we're going to start tracking it either on the front, the first page of the handbook, or maybe an additional page where we can track. It'll actually say what resolution was approved, the date, what section was changed and what version, so.
And one of the items in my six-year plan was to get the handbook changed. COVID put a crimp in that, but we're going to be having a concerted effort in the next two years to get the handbook updated and changed before I leave. So, Counselor Norris.
I just wanted to say thank you also, but seeing the red line and what was there against my age, need to read what it was.
You're welcome.
No, and this is going to be the standard we're going to use from now on, whether it's an ordinance change or whether it's a resolution change or whether it's a handbook change, but we're going to use, track changes. Any other?
It was a great exercise for the whole H.R. team.
Yep.
Since being the new member, we just went around, the three of us, over and over again, so it was perfect.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of September fifth, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carried. Okay, thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
All right, where are we, planning and zoning? Leslie? So for planning and zoning, we have two members, or two appointments, rather. One is for Jason Russ to move from an alternate member to a regular member and the other one is for Paul Kunkelmoller, is his reappointment. We've talked to both of those members, commissioners, and they're in agreement and they're willing to serve. And so that's why we want to bring them to you as a council. Any questions on these? Deputy Mayor Depot.
Not specifically to these two individuals, but do we have, how many spots are open on that committee now?
This will make, this will get, make it full. We had one vacancy and one resignation, so we moved up, we did move up one alternate, excuse me. We did move up one alternate a couple of months ago and then Robert Boris and then, so Paul's going to stay. We will be down to one alternate, though.
So we're, so we need one more alternate?
So Marie Carmenetti resigned and so Jason Russ is being fleeted up from the alternate into, so what does that give us in a vacancy in the alternates? One or two?
Two.
So we'll have two vacancies in the alternate. So if you're out there in the television audience and you're watching us and you want to participate in your local government, we have a need in planning and zoning and in other boards and commissions as well. But, and Clerk Bakura is also going through and looking at our boards and commissions and updating it to make sure that we have the most current list online. It's going to be coming out here pretty soon. And then there'll be vacancies that'll be listed there. And then once we have a list of vacancies, I will bring them to the council so we can get it out to the to the community at large. Okay, any other questions on, on these two? Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mary. Just for knowledge's sake, so when there is an opening, does it go to the alternate first? Is that the, I'm not even sure to say official way, but is that how it's recommended when there's an opening? Or is it opened up to the public somehow and then people apply or how does this run?
So if we have a vacancy, people can fill out an application and apply. If we have, if we have a vacancy in the regular commission, committee, we typically move people from the alternate, offer the people that are in the alternate positions, the first writer refuses to move up and then that creates a vacancy in the alternate positions and then anybody from a general public at large can then fill those positions.
So for people to actually know the vacancies, besides watching here, I know they can go on the Groton City site because I've seen those, but is there any other times that it's actually posted at all so people are aware? Because people don't always go on the Groton City page, per se. So, you know, like if somebody just moved here, there's a lot of people that are moving in, you know, and it's like, well, I like to be involved and maybe they just don't know how. Is there ever like, we can refer them to there, but I'm just saying like, like a job posting kind of thing?
Do you have a recommendation on where you would like it posted? We have it posted on our websites. We have it, there's a couple of links inside, the websites inside the boards and commissions that lists the vacancies that are listed there.
Nextdoor app is a great place.
We also list it, we also list it in the newsletter. That's what I was going to say.
It's also in the newsletter.
Yeah. I would say Nextdoor app because there's a lot of people, I mean, it does cover U.S.-wide, you can do the app. But, I mean, you could also just join locally and there are people that have found jobs through people posting links in there. It's just a suggestion, but it's just for knowledge's sake. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, I will take a motion to move both of these appointments to the mayor and council meeting of September fifth, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
All right, Groton and Bosser Utility Commissions, we, as a result, we're looking at the commissions. Danny and I identified that we, Commissioner Giuliani is up for reappointment in the Groton Utility Commission and in the Bosser Utility Commission and Commissioner Scully is up for reappointment in the Bosser Utility Commission. We have reached out to both of these commissioners and they are interested in continuing their service and that's why we bring them forward to you tonight. Any questions or comments on these? Okay, in that case, I'll take a motion to move these reappointments to the mayor and council meeting of September fifth, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Or is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Okay, Resiliency and Economic Development, Sierra? And if you could introduce Mr. Murphy? I don't know, have you been here with us before? In my council, some of my councillors may recognize you, but some may not.
Sure. Dave Murphy from Resilient Land and Water. I also work for Circa, which is the resiliency agency down the road in Avery Point. I'm not representing them tonight, I'm representing the COG.
Right.
And I give a card to the clerk for her records.
Okay, thank you.
And I also handed Counselor Norris just a little, the action sheet that came or the list of all the actions that are within the hazard mitigation plan, I'm sorry that those were not included in your packet before this evening, but some of these action items are things that you're aware of because they were in our community resiliency plan.
I can do my short presentation.
You can do it.
So the first thing we're going to talk about is adopting the twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-eight Hazard Mitigation and Climate Adaptation Plan. So please, go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you. Again, David Murphy, Resilient Land and Water. My client is the COG, of course, made up of all of you and the other towns as well. Just a couple of quick bullets. This is the fourth edition of the city's Hazard Mitigation Plan and as you know from previous experience, probably, having a Hazard Mitigation Plan makes the city eligible for FEMA grants. That's why the program exists and that's why you need to adopt it every five years. One thing that we did differently, this is my third time being involved with this plan, it's been expanded to become a Hazard Mitigation and Climate Adaptation Plan, which allowed addition of drought and extreme heat. Extreme heat is a big concern in the state right now, so getting it into the plan was, was new and exciting. Expanding the plan also makes it consistent with a program that Circa runs called Resilient Connecticut. So one thing that we did working with Sierra was make sure all the recommendations from the city's resiliency plan were copied into this Hazard Mitigation Plan. Some wordsmithing was necessary because what's called a recommendation in the resiliency plan needs to be retooled as an action, that's what FEMA calls them in the Hazard Mitigation Plan. So we changed some of the words to be a little bit more active tense, but it's really all the same, the same things are in there. We even divided some into smaller chunks so that if the city wanted to, you could apply for separate grants for different parts of recommendations. And that helps it line up with the deep climate resilience fund. And so, last thing I wanted to say is that FEMA really is encouraging communities to make periodic amendments more frequent than every five years. So we have invented a form that can be used. So a year from now, if you want to change something in the plan, you can use the form to make an amendment. And the resolution that you have before you, one of the last line items talks about periodic amendments that are out of cycle, so that's always allowed. And with that, I'll take any questions.
In the mayor's absence, all.
I know you left.
Yes, I do. Are there any questions? Counselor Sheffield, did you have a question?
No.
Oh, okay. Anyone else have any question? Oh, he's coming back.
I was running the meeting.
No?
No.
She's a deputy mayor.
Would you like anything repeated or are you?
No.
Okay.
No, we've, we've talked on this.
There are no questions or comments from the council.
Okay, so no question or comments on a hazard mitigation?
Other than I just want to say, I had a really wonderful conversation with Sierra this afternoon. She, out of her schedule, we talked about forty-five minutes maybe, and she really helped me understand and fill in some dots and blanks for me to what the purpose of this is, how do we keep it going? How does it feed in with city thoughts?
I actually thought it would be longer. Okay. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Sorry, can I make a comment? This is really helpful information for, like, some of these things are things that I care more about or, you know what I mean? So it's, it's nice to see it in this format, to see where we're looking at maybe getting funding from, that kind of thing. I like, I like a spreadsheet, so this is helpful information, so thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, then I will take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of September fifth, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Sierra, Bruce Street Gateway update? This is informing? There's no action on this?
Is it okay if I do Buford's first? I just have another guest.
I'm sorry, what?
Is it okay if I do Buford's Family Restaurant?
Yes, Margaret, please come up. So we're going to, we're going to do the Buford's Minor Facade Improvement Application reimbursement first and then we'll do Bruce Street. Okay, go ahead, Sierra, you have the floor.
Good evening. Here today is Margaret Hirsch, she is one of the EDC commissioners. She is filling in for Margaret Ryon? Am I pronouncing it right? Who is the owner of Buford's Family Restaurant. So Buford Family Restaurant recently redid their sign out in the front and they, so the sign is new and then they ended up fixing the light component within the sign, so now it lights up at, well, during breakfast and then I guess at nighttime. Margaret has a statement from, from Buford's, but I guess, just a quick overview, the EDC is recommending a funding reimbursement amount for two-thousand-four-hundred-three dollars and fifty-one cents. She has completed the application process and submitted all of the documentations, has closed out all the permits with the building office and is in good standing with all of her accounts at G.U. and the tax office. So, Margaret, I'll let you do your statement.
Good evening. So first off, Margaret Hirsch, not Ryon, not the same, Margaret, we get confused a lot. So I am here speaking on behalf of Margaret who apologizes for not being here, but she has personal obligations.
She has family obligations.
Yep. So Margaret, as Sierra just said, is the owner of Buford's Family Restaurant. She was awarded the Minor Facade Improvement Grant for the replacement of that sign over the restaurant entrance. She wanted to let you know that since hanging the new sign, the number of first-time customers coming to her restaurant has increased noticeably, with several customers pointing out that they saw the new sign, did not know there was a restaurant there and thought they would stop to have breakfast or lunch. Lighting makes a difference, the change, just something new. Margaret also commented that she didn't anticipate that impact, the impact of changing the sign, would have, basically would have had on her business and it's truly heartening to see the positive outcome that this small change has brought about. The availability of the Minor Facade Improvement Grant program led Margaret to pursue the sign change, wasn't on her plans, with the support of Matt Longino and myself. She put that plan for the new sign into place and completed the application for reimbursement for the cost of the sign via this grant. Margaret would like to thank the Economic Development Commission, Groton City Council and the Planning and Development, Planning and Development Staff for their guidance and support throughout the entire process.
Okay. This will be tremendous. Deputy Mayor Depot?
I just want to say, I think I'm, I'm really glad that Margaret applied for it. I know that her business was impacted a lot when we redid that road. And even, you know, outside of that, I just think this, even this small grant can make such a big difference because, you know, her business, it's got a small footprint, it's, you know, she's only got funds for so much, I'm sure, so, you know, dropping twenty-five-hundred dollars on a new sign is, is probably not the best for her budget. So I'm really glad that we provide an opportunity to help people improve their business and, you know, just having people see the sign and come to breakfast there, it's going to keep people in the city, bring more people to the city, which was our intent in the first place. So I'm just really happy that we're getting more applicants and hopefully it gets the word out a little bit. Because I know there are some other businesses along that road that are also relatively similar size, small businesses that could maybe use some grant funding. And I think I had asked maybe the mayor about people who are applying for
And I think I had asked maybe the mayor about people who are applying for these small grants, if we're also informing them about the potential for larger business owner grants, or maybe I asked you, Sierra, before. And so I just, I'm hopeful that we can integrate these grant programs that we know about for these businesses, because I think it'll make a big difference in in keeping businesses and keeping people in the city. I think it's great.
Yes.
And this is exactly what this is for. And this is going to be a great impact. Counselor Norris?
And this is a great catalyst for bigger things. You may think it's a small grant, but it isn't. It's more than money. It's a mindset. It's a feeling. It's an emotion. It starts with a sign. It starts with a move. It starts with a name, or in their life, to get in the music. It just keeps growing before you know it. It's not only a block, it's a street. So congratulations to you, economic commission, well done. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other, Counselor Piazza?
I just want to say ditto on the comments, but I did see it, bringing my daughter home from swim practice, and it was like the first thing I saw come up the hill. I knew it was there because I was raised here, but, I mean, it was just like, I was like, wow! And it is like, I want to say, kind of more homey, and like, you want to go in there, you know? So thank you, Sierra. Thank you, Margaret. Both Margarits, appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Can I just add a comment to what Gwen said?
Go right ahead.
Anybody, any business owner, entrepreneur that's looking for grant funding, please feel free to reach out to any of the Economic Development Commissioners, or also myself. My contact information is online. But also, there are two larger grants that we are starting to promote. Women's Business Council, Women's Business Development Council has a $10,000 grant for women-owned businesses. The application period closes September 27th. And then Sektor has the Sektor Rise Program, which is up to $20,000. I do believe that is on a rolling basis, but we are working with businesses who maybe not qualify for the Minor Facade, or that's not what is meeting their exact needs, but those are two programs that we're actively trying to push at the moment.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of September 5th, 2023.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you, Margaret.
Have a good evening.
All right, Bridge Street update?
Okay, so for the Bridge Street update, first off, I would love to thank the mayor and deputy mayor for coming out to our May 23rd workshop. I think we had a really good discussion, and we're going to keep the discussion going. So we will be back on September 27th to follow up with more information. We also will be back before this commission to give an update on the status of actually when the demonstration is going to take place, and some of the feedback that we received from the state. What is before you is, I have been in the process of purchasing the supplies for the demonstration, and overlooked that for this particular item, that I went above the threshold that was required to come before this council. So that was brought to our attention, and we are bringing this to to your attention. And I will leave it to the mayor to lead.
So, finance came to me and said, I just want to bring this to your attention, it's above a $10,000 threshold, the money has already been spent, goods and services have already been received. How do you want to address it? And I said, I want to go to the council. We will present that we did this, but also, as a corrective action, one of the things, because we've we've found that there's been other discrepancies from other departments. So we basically had a Finance 101, reiterating the finance policies, going through it, and we talked to everybody about it to make sure everybody understands the thresholds, what they're allowed to spend, what they have to get permissions for, what they have to get quotes for, and those kind of things. So instead of trying to bring this to you as a resolution and saying, hey, mayor copa, we need you to approve what we've already spent, I felt that it was it was better for Sierra and I to come to you and say, here's what happened, here's what we did, here's the corrective actions that we put into place, and we will continue to move forward. In addition to that, as a result of this, the policies that we have in place were, Ron and I have reached out for feedback from the department heads on the policy so that we can revise the policy and make the policy work better. And so, that's the report that I have. Deputy Mayor Depot?
So one of the things that we lose in not having a resolution is which budget this comes out of. So the money for this, did this come from grant funding? Did this come from our economic development budget? Where did this money come from?
This actually is coming from the planning budget, and it is coming from this current fiscal year, not the last fiscal year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Norris?
Why?
Why?
Why not? It was not properly encumbered.
So there were a couple things that contributed to this. One, we didn't come to council, it did not come to council because it wasn't identified until after the the fiscal year transpired. And then, two, one of the things that we talked about was getting monies from fiscal year '23 encumbered before the end of fiscal year '23, meaning before 30th of June, and that wasn't properly done. And that's why it's coming out of this year's funds. I've talked to Finance Director Uhas, and we talked about it, there's, because it's, because the money was spent and the goods have been received, there's no way to go back and backdate it and encumber that fund, those funds. So that's that's the thing that drove, and I said, okay, I need to make sure that everybody understands, and then next year, when we get into the end of May, the beginning of June, we're going to be making sure internally that everybody understands what encumbering means, and POs and things like that, because encumbering is not just sending an email, say, I want to save this money. You need to get POs, you need to get authorization, you need to have the money committed prior to the end of the fiscal year. So it's not a pretty answer, it's not a clean answer, but it's the truth. And that's why I wanted to bring it to the council and let you know the corrective actions that we've done so that, so this won't happen again. Counselor Sheffield?
The amount due is 19,591.37. Is that after the 18,421 has already been paid?
No, that was the total amount.
The total amount, this invoice for the 1951 does not reflect the sales tax being taken out, so if you take the sale tax out from this, because the city doesn't have to pay that, then it'll be the 18,421.
This is what's approved. This is not in addition to this. This is the amount.
Okay, so what, now, we have a subtotal here, and then we, so we add the subtotal with the sale tax, and I guess freight handling, and then that's, comes up to a different figure. So how do we get to?
Total plus freight.
Yeah. So what is the accurate, is it 18,4?
The 18,4.
18,421.60.
Okay, so, all right, so we are minus the sales tax then, so it's just a subtotal with the freight come out, the 18, okay. Would the sale tax be included or no, eventually?
The sale tax would be taken out.
We are a non-taxable entity.
Okay. And the other question is, I guess, the spelling of our name.
Yeah.
Is that a valid invoice since?
It's a city.
Yeah. Do we need that revised at some point?
I can have it edited.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this part of the presentation? Okay, please continue with the Bridge Street Gateway update?
Honestly, that is all I have for you guys today. But we will be back before you guys in the coming weeks. And also, please check out greatergroton.com. There is a website for the Great Bridge Street Gateway Project. We are already starting to receive comments and engagement with the community members on that, so we'd love for you guys to also participate if you can.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
Are we doing another public feedback workshop, or?
Open house, yes.
And when is that?
September 27th. It will be in this room, council chambers, from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Okay? Thank you very much. Thank you, Sierra. Okay, we're going to move on. Police Department Chief? So the Axon Body Camera Software?
First time I hear.
Okay. So, so let me, so let me, so let me tell you how this typically works. You're right, I probably should have briefed you this afternoon when we talked about other stuff. But basically, they have the, the council has a resolution in front of them, and this is your opportunity to explain what the resolution is for, why the, we need the Axon Body Camera Software.
Yes, yes, sir. Mayor and Council, Dave Burton, Chief of Police. So the Axon Body Camera Software, in this case, is the last year of a five-year contract for our body cameras. We have, everybody in the police department has one that's issued to them, and then this is just the remaining balance on the initial invoice that was signed in 2019.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
I'm assuming this is going to be, this is sole source provider?
Correct. There is no other Axon company, so to speak, as far as this product is concerned. That doesn't mean that in the future, we can't go out, but this is the last part of an agreement that was signed in 19.
That was going to be my next question. Are you planning next year?
Yes, we are. Yes, we're already in the process of, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Sheffield?
Yeah, Axon I use at the Division of Criminal Justice, so it is the sole person, sole entity that deals with the body cam videos and so forth, and so we'll be looking forward to, you know, continued service throughout, you know, so it's probably going to be long-term for a while.
Yes, sir.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of September 5th, 2023.
So moved. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, Tritech Software Support for CAD RMS?
Yes, sir. So our records management system, RMS, is what that stands for, or computer-aided dispatch, which is the CAD. We love acronyms in the police world, so that's what you get. So in order to operate and push data to the FBI, we require these, this type of software. It's been vetted by the FBI, it's been vetted by the Department of Justice. There are a few manufacturers that are out there that do the job for us. One of those is Tritech, or was Tritech. It has since been bought out by another company. We go year to year on this type of contract. This would carry us through the 24 timeline, and we are free to seek out other software options. As a matter of fact, I have reached out to the company to ask them what that would look like if we were looking to change out. That, the current company is Central Square, they're based out of Florida. Tritech was originally based out of Massachusetts, so a little bit of difference there. But it is, again, something that we need, we can't do without it. However, after this invoice or contract period, we would absolutely go out and and seek out another vendor if we can find one that's comparable. Again, this is sole source, Tritech or IMC, which is the product that we use, it's only produced by Tritech, which is now Central Square.
Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting September 5th, 2023.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, St. John's Church Donation?
Yes, sir. So actually, we had a very successful backpack and school supply giveaway at St. John's. We followed that up with one at Branford Manor, but specifically to St. John's, we were down there for quite a while that afternoon. We gave, ended up by giving away 75 backpacks full of supplies, and it really helps the, you know, the families that may be struggling, putting that, those kind of supplies and those expenses together. It is something that I believe in because it is community outreach, and it's a positive image for not only the police department, but also the city of Groton. We have received a check for donation, we plan to turn around and use that for next year's event at St. John's. Oh, by the way, and I should add, we'll be out at the farmer's market tomorrow, doing the same thing.
That's something I wanted to let everybody know, so if you're watching, the farmer's market is tomorrow, 3:00 to 6:00. The police department will be there with additional backpacks for giveaway.
Yes, sir.
So Bring the Kiddos School is starting this week. So any questions or comments? All right, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of September 5th, 2023.